Good morning, it's nine o'clock. We'll call today's Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'll ask everybody, please stand.
Pleased to meet you through the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation and our God in the business world with Lieutenant Justice
For the public, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act located on the north wall of the chambers. Also, there is an automatic defibrillator located in the back if anybody needs that for a medical emergency reasons. And also, I'd ask that everybody would please at this time silence or turn off their cell phones. With that, we'll call together the board, call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Present.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Item B is call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January 29th, 2019 as a date for hearing on certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the board?
Will be approval of the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Just another reminder to the viewers at home and in the audience, Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear on the screen. Commissioner Borgeson and Craft. Motion passes seven to zero.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items now officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to resolutions, D, E, and F. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Craft?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duda.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item G is protest of special valuation of green belt disqualification for parcel number 0105040043 Alvarez 23110 Harrison, Gretna, Nebraska. Mr. Goodwill.
Good morning, Commissioner Rogers, members of the Board of Equalization. My name is Mike Goodwill. I'm with the Douglas County Assessor Registered Deeds Office. Let me give you kind of a brief synopsis of where I think we are on this. I know Mr. and Mrs. Alvarez are here and they may want to address the board. This is a parcel at 23110 Harrison. It's a 15-acre parcel. It has land, a fairly substantial house, and I think an outbuilding or two. And earlier in 2018, latter half of the year, probably in December, one of our, several of our appraisers were out in that part of the county trying to, you know, do their annual sort of inspection thing to verify the data we had on properties out there. And so when they stopped at the Alvarez parcel, they visited, wanted to make sure their measurements were right for the house, and they also knocked on the door and they talked to Mr. Alvarez. And they noted that the property was in special valuation and they asked Mr. Alvarez, have they been haying or taking any kind of other agricultural products? And Mr. Alvarez said, "Well, no, we haven't done any hay or agriculture for several years now." And so our staff went back to the office and they sent out sort of our standard disqualification letter for special valuation. And understand, the way you qualify for special valuation and the way you stay in it is you must meet the definition of agricultural land under 771359. The most common way is for the property to be primarily used for agricultural or horticultural purposes, which means the commercial production of plant or animal products. If there is no commercial property, you could qualify in two other ways. You could have a conservation easement on your property, or you could be enrolled in a program that pays the owner to remove land, the land from production. In looking at the Alvarez parcel, we didn't see commercial production. The owner told us there wasn't any commercial production. There's no conservation easement on file at the deeds office, and the property is not enrolled in a production, a program that pays the owner to remove the land from production. It's not our NCRP. So in our view, the property doesn't qualify. That's why we sent out the disqualification letter. Understand about disqualification, when you disqualification in year one, it has no impact on that year's value, its perspective. So if you disqualify somebody in 2018, the non-agricultural value would first start to hit in the following year, in this case, 2019. Now, in the olden days, there used to be something called recapture, where you just, somebody would take their land out of production or the property would be disqualified and you'd go back and collect taxes for back years on the difference between their ag value and what their full value would have been. But that's no longer the case. Now, the Alvarez have filed a protest, and the protest asks some questions. One is, list the primary use of the parcel. And the Alvarez listed animal and soil preservation, and they provide a statement of why the parcel should not be disqualified. This is highly erodable ground and was in CRP program. We are looking to enroll this in a conservation program. If they're looking to enroll it, I don't think it probably is. The protest form goes on further and says, "List the commercial production of any plant or animal product." That's left blank. Provide the income derived from the parcel. That's left blank. And so in this circumstance, it appears to us that although this parcel may have had some ag use at one time, it no longer does and should be disqualified. Let me add one more note. If that status changes, the Alvarez are still free to apply for special valuation for 2019 by June 30 of 2019. So if between now and then, they get enrolled in CRP, or they get a conservation easement, or they start doing agricultural stuff, they can be put back into special valuation. But at least as we stand here right now, we believe this property no longer qualifies.
Commissioner Boyle, then Duda.
Yes. I want to speak to the-
The property owners, yeah.
I'm aware of that, Mike. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. You can just sit down if you'd like. I'd like to speak to the Alvarez.
Purple. I apologize, Commissioner.
If you'd like to come to the podium, that'd be fine. I have a, I have bad news for you. We don't have, the county board has no authority to grant the relief you're requesting. And I've asked repeatedly, as recently as last week, that we stop telling taxpayers like yourselves to come to this meeting expecting relief because under the statute, we have no authority to do that.
Oh, really?
All we can do is turn you down. So that's not authority, that's rubber stamping. And it's, it's not really passing the buck. It's not because of the assessor or anything, but why in the world, state law says you can appeal when all we can do, we don't have the authority, all we can do is say, "Yeah, we agree with the assessor, you don't get the relief you want." And the response that I get is, then you should just be filing to Turk. We have to turn you down. It's a routine matter, apparently. We turn you down, so then you have an appeal to Turk. So I'm very sorry. I apologize. And I've got a, if you parked in the A level, I have a parking pass that we have from the county to get you out without paying. It is very annoying to me that we do this to you, not as annoying as it probably is to you. So please accept my personal apology.
We accept.
And if you want to stay through the rest of this and listen to more of this statutory sighting, that's up to you. But it's a dead dog.
All right. Thank you.
So we have no, no recourse.
Well, hold on. Hold on, ma'am.
Please don't listen to him. He doesn't know what he's talking about.
Hold on, ma'am. You too, Mike.
Well, I think that was pretty personal. I do know what I'm talking about. Legal counsel, do we have any authority to grant the relief the taxpayers are seeking?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. The board is always constrained by the applicable laws, and it's my understanding based on the information that's presented. And as explained by Mr. Goodwill, there isn't a basis for this board to grant the relief that they're seeking. And so the board should deny what they're seeking. But in the past, this board has heard evidence at the BOE and granted in part agricultural or special valuation status. It's happened of late recently, but I don't know that this is a case that warrants such a split by the board, given the evidence that's been presented.
Well, I, you saw me walk up and asked her, I asked her before I spoke, "Do we have the authority to grant your relief?" And she said repeatedly, which I agree with her, she said, "I want to hear the argument first." And I said, "That's fine, but do we have the authority?" And after about three of those questions, she said, "No, we don't." So actually, I do know what I'm talking about, Mr. Duda, and I, you know, I understand you get excited about these sort of things, and so do I. I want to treat the taxpayers fairly, and this is smoke and screens. It's a waste of their time. And why we, why we do this, I don't get. I just don't get it. I guess we should just routinely, not even have them come down, but let's just routine, routinely turn everybody down and let them appeal. That's what we ought to do. So anyway, that's where we are. So I make a motion that we close this hearing, if that's what it is, and that we grant the assessor what they want. And so these people can appeal to Turk.
Well, wait a minute. Commissioner Boyle, let me-
That's what I think.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I believe what the county attorney said is there's not a basis for making the decision. Not that we don't have the right. Clearly, we have the right to grant green belt status if we so choose. We have done so in the past. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. So I'm not sure what that was about. You are doing the right thing. We do have the authority to make this decision. Now, having said that, and you will get a chance to speak, and I am anxious to hear what you, what you have to say, what you did say is, we're not hearing a basis for why it should be green belted. I originally put my light on just to say one thing concerning the CRP, the Conservation Reserve Program, that you have to been, the land has to have been actively used three out of the prior five years for it to qualify for CRP in producing a recognized crop. I've gone through that before, so I know the process. So, excuse me, I'll be quiet now and, thank you.
Well, the letter I received-
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
Pardon?
Here, here I am.
I'm sorry. My name is Jim Alvarez. My wife, Linda, the houses, the property's in my wife's name, so I'm going to represent her as best I can. I'm very nervous, but-
You're all right.
The letter I received, this is property's not being used principally for agriculture or for horticultural purposes. I, I looked up the word horticultural, and this is what it says. Horticulture has been defined as the culture of plants for food, comfort, and beauty. A more precise definition can be given for the cultivation, processing, of sales of fruits, nuts, vegetables, and ornamental plants, and flowers, as well as many additional services. It also includes plant conservation, landscape restoration, soil management, landscape and garden design. Last year, the NRCS came out to our property and did a study, and this is, may I read this, what they said? I have copies if you'd like to see it. Do you want copies? I think you have it.
I think they have it.
Okay. This is, the purpose of the status review is to determine if the conservation compliance provisions of this current farm program, which it is a farm, it's tract number 3569, it is in the farm program. And the status will, will consist of determining if acceptable conservation system is being followed or being used on this highly, highly erodable fields, and if wetland conservation compliance provisions are being met on this tract. They came out and they did an inspection, and the follow-up letter says, "The Natural Resources Conservation NRCS conducted a status review on tract 3569, determined the compliance is highly erodable land and wetland conservation of the provision of the Food Security Act 1985. We have made a preliminary technical determination. You are using approved conservation program based on finding adequate erosion control. We commend you for your efforts protecting our natural resources." I have, this is extremely steep ground out there. It's the highest point in Douglas County. The water that comes off this ground goes into the Elkhorn River. And this is the reason that we're being watched, what we're doing out there. And what I'm saying is this ground should not be even cropped. It can't be cropped, really, for that reason. And we don't hunt on it. We don't do anything out of the ordinary. You just let it lay there in its natural beauty. We have trees out there and, what else can I say?
A lot of wildlife.
A lot of wildlife. But looking at what the definition with horticulture says, you don't have to crop this, you know, and to be protected, to be in the program. So, and I, I just don't understand. I mean, we've done the best possible, and we will try and get in some sort of conservation program, if that means anything. But anything else we can add?
When we initially called, after we got the letter stating that, you know, we were going to be out of the green belt and our whole tax base would, would change, they said, "Okay." There were some parcels of land east of Hassan Harrison that sold for $40,000 an acre, and that's what they want to change our tax base to on our property. Well, there's no way. 15 acres at $40,000, that's $600,000 based on the land, not including the house. And if we ever went to sell something, there's no way. It's, it wouldn't bring that kind of, of money.
We couldn't come within a half million dollars of that. No way. I just think it's totally unfair.
Commissioner Duda, Morgan, Borgeson, and Boyle.
And, thank you. In reading this letter that you received from the NRCS-
Yes, sir.
It says, "We're conducting a status review on randomly selected USDA program participants."
Yes.
That says they're a USDA program participant. I need to know more about that.
I've got a letter here.
If you are a USDA program participant, that may change things. That may be the basis.
Wait, sir. Can you, sir, can you give it, sir? Right there to the clerk.
If I may address that-
Please.
The program that Mr. Alvarez is talking about is the Highly Erodable Land Program, HELC. And at least from the information we have from the USDA, it says, "For conservation compliance, it requires producers to farm according to an approved system where conservation plan if they plant annually tilled crops on highly erodable land." And that's all it requires. It doesn't require them to do anything for grass. They can continue to do grass. And the other thing to keep in mind is, statutorily, to qualify for special valuation, if you're in a federal program, it has to be paying you for taking the land out of production. This program doesn't pay. It simply says to people who wish to farm, who have erodable land, you have to follow certain guidelines when you do it.
Thank you.
Commissioners Morgan, Borgeson, and Boyle.
So what you started to say, "I'm not sure the letter means you're in that program." That was the question, and I don't know, Mr. Goodwill, if they were in that program, I think then maybe we'd have the authority. Otherwise, I'm not sure we do have the authority at this point in time.
Mr. Alvarez, are you receiving any, Mr. and Mrs. Alvarez, are you receiving any federal payments for being in this program?
No. No. Not going to lie about that, no. Not at all. We have in the past, when, but they don't longer have a program where they're paying you to set aside ground. They don't even have a CRP program available, I think, right now. Now, I talked to the NRCS, somebody in Blair, and he told me they could come in and give you money to remove trees and things like that, but I have to hire that done. But, and I don't know it's available as far as, if there is any set aside program, which I don't think there is at this point.
As far as not that we're paid for.
Right.
And I don't want to put Teresa on the spot, but I don't think, because you're not in that program, I don't think we have the authority today to be able to grant it. I mean, I'd like to be able to do that, but I don't think, right now, we have that authority, is what it looks like.
But we are in a, we are in a farm program, though.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I would concur with Mr. Goodwill. I don't think they've met the requirements to qualify for the special, like, based on the evidence that we've seen today. I don't think they've met the requirements to go ahead and qualify for the special valuation.
So I think that's why probably both Commissioner Duda and Mike are correct, because it's not in the program to give us that authorization to do it. You know, at this time. I mean, we can do it.
Are you cutting the baby in half?
Trying to be a mediator. But it seems like, you know, if they were in that program, then we probably could go ahead and grant that. But I think without being in it, I don't think we can.
And let me point this out. The disqualification letter that goes out, it's not going to, it doesn't affect the 18 value or the 18 taxes. What it does is it puts the Alvarez on notice that they are, that they don't currently qualify for special valuation. If between now and that application deadline of June 30, they start doing agricultural things, they get, or they get a conservation easement, or they get in one of these programs that pays them to take something out of production, they can certainly reapply and get special valuation. What we're all, all we're saying is that as of, as of the latter part of 2018, when we went out there, we don't think they qualify under any of the three parts of the potential test for, for being in special valuation.
All right, Mr. Goodwill, and I do want to say we thank you for your courtesy and your messages that you have to bring to us each week. And, you know, you give the people an excellent courtesy in trying to look at this in a favorable light, but you also have to respect the statute at the same time, so it's a little challenging. So if there's something you can do to work with the Alvarezes, we'd appreciate it, to the best that you can for the future.
Well, and let me add to this, too. The valuation piece, we are in the time in which people can meet with our staff and discuss the 2019 values because they're not, they're not final yet. I mean, we do these preliminary meetings throughout the month of February, and often people come in with data that results in a, in a change of what we initially thought the correct value would be. And so we've already, we've already advised Mr. and Mrs. Alvarez that they should make an appointment to do that very thing. They can then provide whatever additional information they have about, you know, how difficult it might be because of the grade, or anything else that might have an impact on what that proverbial willing buyer would pay a willing seller. So the, the value piece isn't going to be a done deal until March. So there's still time to have that discussion.
You done?
Yes.
Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So being in the federal program, to me, it's kind of, it sounds like there's, there's a gap or whatever, because if you're in the federal program, that doesn't automatically come down on our level to exempt or lower or affect their-
What that program simply does is it provides that if somebody wants to do tilled crop, they have to follow certain conservation rules and guidelines. It doesn't prohibit them from tilling a crop, and it certainly doesn't tilling them, prevent them from doing non, from doing agricultural activities that don't involve tilling. I mean, they could continue to hay, and, and that would be an agricultural activity. So it's, there are conservation guidelines, but it doesn't rise to the level of things like the CRP program where, as Commissioner Duda knows, they pay you to take something out of production.
So if the, so go another route, and if the property or the ground is as erodable as they're stating, and I've been to this point, because it is the highest point in Douglas County and very pretty.
Did you, did you get to the top and plant a flag?
I didn't plant the flag, but I got to the top.
Did you just go in?
Yeah. That, but, so that's my point, is that if there's nothing you can do with that land, then does that, also, I guess maybe that's what you talk about during your preliminary discussions, but to me, that would affect the value.
Yeah, and maybe I'm not explaining this right, but there's really two questions involved in this parcel. One is a status question. Does it qualify or does it not qualify for special valuation? And in our view, it doesn't meet any of the requirements. The second question is, in the end, if it's not in special valuation, what's the appropriate market value for that particular property? And that's what, that's what needs to be discussed here in the preliminary meetings, you know, because quite frankly, I've, I've not been there. This is a discussion that's, that's better held between the Alvarez and our appraiser for that area about, given the grade, given the gully, is it, there's a big gully? Okay. Given the grade, given the gully, the washout or whatever, what impact would that have on somebody who was interested in buying that property? What would they pay for?
May I say something, please? The letter states horticulture. And I read the definition of horticulture, which says the restoration of soil management. And we're trying to keep this, soil management means you don't do anything with it, really, basically, as far as I'm concerned.
You leave it in the grass and you leave it in your tree.
And so that's where, going back to, to that, that's where I think there's a gap or there's a conflict that you have to, so you're saying if he's in that program and that's a legitimate definition to be in the program, but you're not getting paid, so now you don't, you don't really qualify, right?
Well, the statute says the only programs you are in to get special valuation are ones where you're paid to, to take your property out of production. And if I may add, horticulture is used in the definition of agricultural land, but not quite in the sense that Mr. Alvarez's definition uses it. What the statutory definition of agricultural land says is the property must be predominantly used for agricultural or horticultural purposes. And it goes on to say that predominantly used means for the commercial production of plant or animal product. So at least insofar as special valuation goes, the broader definition of horticulture might be to, to keep and maintain, you know, the environment, the habitat there, if you will, but for the purpose of special valuation, which is, after all, designed to give a valuation preference for people that are doing agricultural stuff in areas where there is non-agricultural influence on property value, there's, yeah, the definition that we're operating under here for what qualifies for special valuation, it uses the word horticulture, but in a narrower sense than Mr. Alvarez's definition.
Well, I still believe that even if we can't go the federal program route, that definitely has to be looked at in terms of the value placed on that property, you know, regardless of what house they have on it, there's pieces and there's areas or acres of this property that, I'm sorry, you're not going, there's no value to it. I mean, there isn't, when, when you go to buy that property.
There's not.
So that, I hope, would be looked at intensely during this time of the preliminary discussions.
We are landlocked. We don't even own the road going out here.
Right. Right.
We're not landlocked. We have an easement to the road.
Right.
But there's property all around us, and nobody there is going to be developing anything anytime soon.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I think, having heard this, I appreciate the discussion. I think it unfortunately proves what I was saying at the outset. So I'll make a motion, just see how this goes, just so you can get your denial or maybe your approval. I'll make a motion that we grant the taxpayers the relief they're seeking. The relief that we're- I, I'm making a motion that you get what you want, and let's see if we get a second.
There is a motion by Commissioner Boyle. Is there a second?
Okay. Well, that kind of tells you where we are.
Motion, guys, we like a second.
So I make a motion that we deny the taxpayers the relief they're seeking, so that then you can appeal it. But I do want to say something.
Well, let me see something. There's a, that's a motion by Commissioner Boyle to deny. Is there a second?
So we're not going to deny it either.
A second by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Boyle, you were talking?
Well, yes, I think what, Mr. Goodwill is a very valuable employee at our office. He knows the statutes inside out, upside down, and it's very helpful. But something that you said was probably more succinct to me than anything else that you've said today, and that is that there's still time for these taxpayers to meet with your staff. I'd like to see that included in this letter that we send out, having people come down here when there's no relief we can give them. I just think it's unfair, and it's a waste of everyone's time, and most importantly, it's a, it's a very, to me, my personal feeling is, it's very disrespectful to the taxpayers to make them think that we can do anything. May I say something? In the 22 years we've owned this property, we've never once received anything as far as correspondence, anything that shows what we're supposed to be doing within the CRP program and transition over to- Right. And we never received anything in 20 something years. Well, I, it's really regrettable, but I think, you know, we can, the assessor's office will help you through it, and others will as well, but I just really regret that you had to come down for this. But meet with, Mr. Goodwill, can they still meet with your staff and try to work something out? Is there, you mentioned that earlier.
Throughout the month of February, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Very good.
There you go.
All right.
Commissioner Craft and Commissioner Borges.
Some of my questions have been answered, such as how-
Some of my questions have been answered, such as how long you've owned it. Has this ever produced fruit-bearing trees or, yes?
It's corn, you can see on the history that it's been in rook crop.
It's been in rook crop, so it is tillable land?
Yes, some of it.
And how, do you, do you farm the rest of the area?
We have planted a bunch of blue spruce on a lot of this crop. We probably have 100 of those spruce on the crop right now. No, we've never farmed it. We have, it's, we have hated before in the past, yes, but we haven't for the last year or so.
Okay. The bru, the blue spruce, is that a crop tree, or is that, you know?
It can be, yes.
Okay, are you using it, harvesting it?
We have not sold anything yet, as of this point, no, we have not. They just, they were planted as babies, now they're big, so we could sell some trees off, yes.
Okay. I would like to lay this over to investigate it a little more. I'm reading, I'm reading the state statute 002.07, and it defines agricultural land and horticultural land as a parcel of land primarily used for agricultural or horticultural purpose. This includes wasteland lain in or adjacent to and in common ownership with management with other agricultural and horticultural land. Does not include any land directly associated with any building or enclosure. Then 2.08, it says the purpose shall mean used for commercial production of any plant or animal product in a raw or unprocessed state that is derived from the science of art, agriculture, the art of agriculture, aquaculture, or horticulture, and it goes on. So that kind of tells me that I don't think you qualify. But I'm going to add, the, there's so much in this that I'm going to have to review it, and I'm not a legal expert, Mr. Goodwilly is, but I would like to lay this over for two weeks.
That's a motion, we owe two weeks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Borges. You want to speak to that comment, Bill, Mike? Do you have anything to say to Commissioner's comment?
Well, I, I think, Commissioner Craft, that's a fairly accurate reading of the state regulations that accompany the statute. You know, the test is commercial production, and there seems to be none.
Why is that a test?
So, what's that?
Oh.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I've got to turn, I'm sorry.
You know, take one, take all. You know, I, I suppose you could, could lay it over for two weeks. It isn't going to create commercial production where there isn't.
My, my, part of the reason for the layover, Mr. Goodwilly, is, would that give you time to have the appraiser go out and look at the value of the land, to assert an actual value?
I, I, you know, I guess I suppose we could do that.
I think that'd be beneficial. I don't know if other members of the board agree.
But, but remember, we're just dealing with, this protest deals with the status question.
Right.
The, the value question isn't, isn't before you, that's kind of down a separate track. But I suppose we could have staffers go out and take a look at it, sure.
I, I would like that, even if it is a different issue, to help the process roll. We'll see where the layover goes.
Commissioner Borges and Kavanaugh, then Boil.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want you to feel it was a waste of your time, because again, we do have the authority to grant this on the, if there is basis to grant it. So coming down here, and, and again, we're learning a lot about your property and questions are popping up, so I'm actually glad you're here. I appreciate Mike being here as well from the assessor's office to give us their perspective and why they're doing or recommending what they're recommending us to do. But how long has this property been in the status and wish it, which it had been until now?
I, I'm not sure how far back it goes, but it's been in special value for a while.
Over 20 years, 25 years, maybe 30, I don't know.
We knew it, but we weren't going to be able to do anything with a lot of it, simply because of the lay of the land.
Okay. And, you know, I, I know things change, but that concerns me as well, and so I think having a little bit more time to, to look at the, the land may be helpful. And the, the, you keep quoting that it's the commercial test, or the commercial...
Commercial production of plant or animal products through the art or science of agricultural and, or agriculture and horticulture.
But what about the restoration of soil, on soil management?
Yeah, that's, that's the, right, that's where...
And that's what, and that's what would, I mean, if you had a conservation easement, you'd qualify, or if you were in one of these federal productions. You could explore conservation easement as well, but neither of those things are happening either.
Okay, well...
It's, it's a, it's a nice piece of ground out in the country, it's steep, it could erode, it's not ideally suited to agriculture, but it's not being, it, it just doesn't qualify for agriculture. I mean, the purpose of special valuation is to continue to provide a valuation preference to people that are actively doing agricultural things with their property, and, and that ain't this.
But it's under the scrutiny of the NRCS, though.
Well, a lot of things are under scrutiny of the NRCS, and it's not prohibiting you from farming.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Alvarez, is that right? Thanks for coming down. I know this takes time out of your day, but that's why we're here, to let citizens be heard, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that, and this goes to the notice that you had a moment ago, that in a very long time, I think you might have mentioned 20 years, you had not received any notice?
We've never received anything from the county in writing, even when we bought the property, what we're supposed to do with it. And that's, I mean, had I known that, it might have made a big difference, too. I don't know, but I, I still really, you know, that's all I can say. We just...
Okay, well, I mean, that's, you know, something that always gets my attention, because if you don't know what to do...
Yeah.
You're not told what, what the rules are, it's difficult to comply.
We're not trying to bend the rules, by any means. This is a small piece of ground that's...
Sure.
Most of it's...
Mr. Goodwilly, I know that, you know, we've had this discussion before on other matters, and I'm very interested in how people are notified of, you know, what's right and what's wrong, and what's, what's going on.
Once you're in special valuation, you stay there until you get a disqualification letter. But no, we, we don't send to everybody who's in special valuation an annual letter that says, hey, you're getting this because you're farming, keep it right up. You know, so i- in this case, if you're in special valuation, no news is good news.
Okay.
What you will get every year, or every other, whenever your value changes, you will get a valuation notice on or before June 1, if your value changes. So, but in terms of, you're currently in special valuation, you know, keep farming, and you'll stay in it, no, we don't do that.
Oh, so, so that's what happened here, in June, a disqualification notice went out to these folks.
Actually, it was, it was, it was later, it was later this year than June. What happened is, in the late fall, our appraiser staff, or some of our appraisers went out there, Mr. Alvarez told them, no, we're not doing any farm activities any longer, and that prompted the disqualification letter.
Okay. So that report exists someplace? The, the appraiser's report that, that you just indicated changed this qualification to a disqualification?
Yeah, there should be some notes probably in our real estate systems that affect, sure.
Okay. Well, I mean, if we're going to lay this over, it might be helpful for us in the decision-making process to see that report. We do this all the time in Board of Equalization, where we say, okay, well, let's, let's see what the work product was on the, on the decision-making. That's all I'm asking here, is could we, if we do lay this over, possibly see that so that we can follow what the decision-making process was? And, and then, I, I think I understand now what he's saying in terms of, you apparently purchased a property that was already qualified, and for all this time, it's been qualified, so there's no reason to tell you you're qualified, as long as you're still qualified.
No, because merely, merely purchasing the property is, or selling the property is not a disqualifying event.
I understand.
If he broke off a few acres to somebody else, that would not be a disqualifying event. Subdivision isn't either.
Right. And, and you've had this property for all that time, is that correct?
Yes, over 20 years.
Okay. So, thank you.
Commissioner Boil.
I, I'd like to ask if we, because I'm inclined to support Commissioner Craft's, anything to do that might help you. Who is going to do what, and what will we see? I mean, is, is there going to be some kind of a report from the federal government? Are we going to get the farmers' union involved, or are you coming back, or what's going to happen? If we lay this over, what happens? Who does, who does what?
I think we can probably prepare the kind of packet with the property information that we would provide a referee looking at evaluation protests.
Okay, so you, what, what do you expect would happen from that? Would it be, just be kind of reentering what was said today?
I, I, I think I would expect to see some of the notes from the conversation that our appraiser had with Mr. Alvarez about the cropping, or about the, the hay. I expect there'd probably be some analysis of the value piece, even though that's not the issue that's in front of us. We might be able to develop something a little more, too, about what this H E L C program is.
Do you anticipate that you can support, that after this, I know that you don't know what the results are of all this stuff that you're going to put together, but do you think that, do you anticipate that you could support the relief the Alvarez family's asking for, if this report comes out?
What they're asking for today, no, they're not, they're not doing agricultural stuff here, they don't qualify for special valuation.
Okay, so if you...
What, what may end up happening is we may end up taking another look at, at, at the value, and it may, you know, that may be a different amount than what we're talking about.
So it's just changing, you're talking about just changing the value, not going to the core issue of their property?
I, you know, I don't think they, I don't think they qualify for, I mean, this isn't, this isn't being used for agricultural purposes.
Okay, so see, I, that's what I'm saying, that this is not going to change, and unfortunately, you know, that we're kind of, we're putting a, a Band-Aid on a broken arm, you know, it's, it's, this is, nothing's going to come of this. And so we'll be, two weeks from now, they'll, they'll come back, and we'll have the same thing, and we won't be able to do anything. I just don't see this going anyplace. But I, I will support the layover, just, I guess, more out of curiosity. I, I hate to drag the Alvarez out back from where they live, but, you know, I, I'll do it, but I, I don't think anything's going to come of it, and I, and I regret that, because I don't think anything's going to change. So, but let's give it, let's roll the dice and see if we can't find a solution for you. Maybe Mr. Goodwilly can tell you how to get through this place, you know, somehow. I don't know that changing the valuation's the answer. I mean, if, if the county assessor's office feels that the valuation is accurate, I mean, then you have to go, go other places to try to get that relief, but I don't think that's the, I don't think that's what you're, maybe that's what you're asking, I don't know, but in any event, let's go ahead, and I'll vote for the layover, let's see what happens, and I just, it's very frustrating, because we really are not in a very good position to help you, so...
Well, so the soil management means nothing, then, as far as what we're doing, I mean, just not, under the horticultural definition of soil management, that's, I really thought that's what we were doing.
Commissioner Duda.
The legislature has clearly tasked each county board with defining what is agriculture in their county, because it differs from county to county, and, and we've always asked for a bright line. We don't want to have to sit in judgment, and, and there is no bright line. It is our responsibility to determine what is farming in, in Douglas County, and soil management has never qualified for anybody. Everybody that owns a lawn can make the case that they're doing soil management. I'm sorry, in hindsight, when you had the CRP contract in place, it's unfortunate that that was not rolled over and extended for another, those are 10-year contracts, and that clearly would have, that's why there was no question before, when it was still in the CRP program. Once it came out of the CRP program, it lost its eligibility unless it was going back into active farming. Nothing is going to change factually in the next two weeks. I see absolutely no reason to lay this over. All we're asking the, the assessor to do is, is hone in on the valuation, and you're going to do that anyway, whether we lay it over or not. If we lay it over for two weeks, you've got to come back down again and go through this again, and nothing's going to change, it's going to be the same. I don't anticipate any factual changes, and so I don't personally see any advantage of, of the two-week layover myself. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, there is a motion to layover. If that wins, it'll be laid over to the 29th. If it doesn't pass, then we'll go to the original motion of denial. Please vote on the motion to layover.
Motion passes, five to two, Commissioner Rogers and Duda voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Your item will be on 29th?
Pardon?
Will be on, on the 29th, be back on in two weeks. It's laid over two weeks.
Is it going to be laid over then?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you, you turned it down, so...
Could I say, be careful.
Say one thing on that.
Quickly.
The only thing I want to be careful about is not have you come down if we can't do something in a positive way to waste our time. I mean, let's make sure, Mr. Goodwilly, I know you want to try to be helpful, but if it can't, you know, if we don't have the authority to do something in two weeks, I'd prefer not to have them come back. If there are some things that could be done that would justify our giving this consideration, then that'd be great to have it on the agenda, otherwise I don't want to see you make another trip down, even though Mr. Boil, Commissioner Boil will give you the parking pass.
May I ask, the two-week delay, are you going to go out there and, and make an assessment on your own, then, or what?
Well, they're making an assessment, as Commissioner Duda said, all properties right now are being reviewed by the assessors, and those will be a constant thing going on until, what, March 1st?
Sure.
Mr. Goodwilly?
Sure, but again, and, and I can't emphasize this strongly enough. What, what we're going to be talking about here in the month of February, and before we leave here, I, I want to get the Alvarez an appointment with one of our appraisers to sit down and talk about it. What they're going to be talking about is value. What you have to decide today has nothing to do with value.
Right.
It's, it's merely the status. Does this property qualify for special valuation as being one that's primarily used for agricultural or horticultural purposes? In the next two weeks, crops are not suddenly going to grow and get harvested. In the next two weeks, this property is not going to suddenly be in a conservation easement. In the next two weeks, this property isn't going to be enrolled in a federal program that will pay the Alvarez for taking it out of production. Now, what can happen is if any of those things happen between now and the 30th of June, the Alvarez can reapply for special valuation, and they would, and if they, and if they have done those things, they will qualify for special valuation, and that status will be reinstated for 2019, which would probably result in a sizable reduction in value. So I, I'm not sure what's going to be accomplished, at least in terms of the status question that we have in front of us today, in the next two weeks. The value question, we have time to work on.
And that's what looks likely, and that's why I brought this up, because I didn't want you to come back unless there's some way to get it into a conver, conver, conserva...
Conservation.
Conservation in the next two weeks. And I don't know that that can happen, and if not, then I think what Mr. Goodwilly's stating is your other alternative by that June date. So that's it.
Commissioner Boil and Craft.
Well, I, I think that's kind of what I was talking about a half hour ago, but in any event, I think what I'd like to see happen is really following up on what Mr. Goodwilly said, and also Commissioner Morgan's concerns, I'm, I wasn't interested in having you come down in the first place, and making you come down here, because I didn't think this would go anywhere, and it hasn't. Now, I, I did vote out of respect for Commissioner Craft to go ahead and lay it over and see what else we come up to help you, maybe. Maybe the solution is to not talk about valuation necessarily, although that may be of some use, but I think to get to the core of the issue is the status of your land. If you need a conservation classification or something of that nature, who, who can help? I mean, who can help the Alvarez get this, get this done? I mean, is there a group that assists getting these handled? I mean, is there a, and I, I mean, really, Mike, I don't know.
No, I, you know, the, the thing is, there, there's three choices.
Okay.
They could do some agricultural stuff, and that's kind of up to them, right?
Is it suitable?
For, for non-tillable, for just hay, yeah, I think they could probably hay, or they could take trees. But, but in, in any event, the, the H E L program, H E L C program about highly erodible land, it doesn't prohibit agriculture. What it prohibits is agriculture without some sort of approved conservation...
Yeah.
...plan for doing it.
Okay.
So, so they could, they could do agricultural stuff between now and June 30th. They, they could explore from the USDA, or who does the CRP, is it the USDA?
Yeah.
Okay, so they could explore that. There also are... There also are Conservation, Conservation Easements Act. I'm not sure if they, who they go through for that purpose, whether it's a, you know, a county zoning sort of thing, but we can look into that for them too.
You know, that'd be great. I mean, if you would do that, that's way beyond, but I, that's, you know, that would be terrific if you would give them some tips and some contact and get Commissioner Duda's cell phone number and call him at home at night and, no, get, get some information for them so that they can qualify for this and then maybe in two weeks, this will be resolved. I don't want you to come back on something and do this to you again. But you know, we're all here to help you. We are. We're constrained by the laws. I have a different view than other commissioners. That doesn't mean I'm wrong or I'm right. That doesn't mean that they are either. You're the ones that matter and I want to see something done that gives you some help so that you can get this resolved. You know, you need some peace and it sounds like it's a beautiful piece of land. I, because I live east of 70, I live on 10th Street, so I affectionately call it France. And you live in a wonderful part of France from the looks of it.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, would you give my office a call and if I'm not there, leave your phone number and have them email it to me because I do want to talk to you.
To me?
Yes.
Okay, can I get your number then?
Four 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 seven zero two five.
May I have your PIN please? What is it please? Four four what?
Four 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 seven zero two five.
Seventy-two?
Seven zero two five.
Two five, and this is Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because I do want to discuss this further.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there most to it, John? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
We're now called to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, roll call, I mean, Board of Corrections meeting, roll call please.
Commissioner Morgeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, December 11th. Motion by Commissioner Boyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote. Minutes.
Okay. Motion passes, six commissioners voting yes, Commissioner Morgan abstaining.
I'm sorry.
So Commissioner Morgan is changing his vote to yes. Motion passes seven zero.
Item two is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to comment on Board of Corrections related matters not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, go to the reporter's directive. Our interim deputy director is in for Director Myers who's absent. Amber.
Good morning, Commissioners. Interim Deputy Director Amber Redman. Like Commissioner Rogers stated, Mike is absent today. He's out of town finishing up at a jail conference, so he's asked me to deliver the monthly report to you guys this morning. We are halfway through the budget year and we do remain over budget. Good news is this was kind of the first month that it showed signs of tapering off after all of our pay and staffing adjustments. So I do feel like Joe and I are at a place where we can meet and discuss the budget supplement needed to account for all of those contractual changes that were implemented after our budget was approved. Joe and I have been aiming for a timeline of February, so it is right around that time to take action on that. On a positive budgetary note, I do have the pleasure of reporting that our revenue is tracking ahead of projected pace. I'm sure that makes everyone a little happier. Moving on to enclosure number two, community corrections. Down a little bit from last month, we had 14 individuals that were housed in the sanction center for a total of 107 bed days. The transitional discharge center that we refer to as the TDC Center received its first clients in December after planning meetings concluded with the county and district court. I'll remind you guys that the TDC moves individuals who were previously not selected for community corrections to work release for up to the final seven days of their sentence. While we are still in the very beginning phases of that, it's our hope that this process will better facilitate reentry planning as well as lowering the number of individuals held in secure custody. During the first month of operation, the TDC Center had nine placements, saving a total of 51 bed days in the main jail. As you know, we've had reentry specialists throughout the main jail for more than a year now and one area we still needed to address was the admissions intake and release area for those individuals that are making a quick turnaround in jail. Reentry Services implemented a new discharge triage service in the jail. A reentry specialist is on duty during the afternoon and evening hours to assess individuals who are being released from their court appearance. The service is designed to provide for immediate basic needs of individuals who were not incarcerated long enough to have engaged in some of our other discharge planning processes. That's also in the very beginning stages, so there will be more to report on how that kind of evolves in the upcoming weeks. Things continue to go well with the 24/7 sobriety program. There's really nothing of significance to report on that this month. We did receive notice from Marcos that Lancaster County is exploring the option of adopting a 24/7 program. We're more than happy to provide them with our feedback and guidance on that bill in the very near future. Down a little bit from last month, excuse me, up a little bit from last month, we had 56 individuals admitted to our work release program. There was a small dip with both the house arrest and reentry assistance program. We admitted 51 individuals into house arrest and 23 individuals were admitted to RAP. You will see that one individual achieved their GED from reentry assistance program and five individuals from programs in the main jail received their GED last month. So we are planning our next GED graduation in the next upcoming months. Ideally, we'll be aiming for a March timeline for that, so we'll keep you guys posted. Moving on to the enclosure number four on personnel. Our final new hire class of 2018 graduated last Friday. They are in the FTO phase of their training program for the next couple of weeks and then they'll deploy on their own to kind of help out with some of the overtime that we've been seeing arise and due to our staffing shortages. We did promote one sergeant last month and we just finished up a significant number of background checks and are starting scheduled interviews for our next new hire class. We will be utilizing the lieutenants during that process this month in an effort to accelerate the process of interviewing and hiring for the new correctional officers. We hope to have that next new hire class start in late February or early March, so we are still on target for that. And plans are in development to launch a new staff development and mentoring program. We did start our first series of meetings on this topic earlier this month. We're aiming to improve officer performance, engagement and retention during the first year of their employment. I know Mike talked a little bit about this last month during his report and this really is a strong focus for us at the moment. Moving on to enclosure number five on the population. Our count really fluctuated last month. You'll know our low count of 1212 and I was really hoping to see that number dip below 1,200 before we hit the holidays, but we didn't quite get there. I was hoping to call up our former director and brag about that, but we didn't quite get there. Because of that low count, we did see our ADP lower a little bit, coming in right around We do continue to keep our US Marshal and ICE numbers down to manage our count during construction. The ICE increase noted, noted there is really minimal. We're talking about less than 10 individuals. A side note on ICE, we are in the process of renewing our contract with ICE. Upon our last renewal, we only did a one-year contract with them, so it is time to renew with them again. And as part of that process, we are reevaluating our per diem with them, so there will be more information on that to come in the next month. I'm curious to see how that plays out. They are being impacted by the government shutdown. The individuals that are responsible for renegotiating those terms of the contract with me are out of office at the moment. So that may be a bit delayed. All of that's kind of depending on that government shutdown. Nothing too significant to report for medical or mental health data. We are really close to finalizing the medical contract document and that'll be in front of you guys for signature next month. We had one of probably our final meetings just yesterday working on that document. A couple of other noteworthy items. We did accomplish a series of meetings to review all the operations at Corrections last month. The initial findings and resulting plans for changes to our organizational structure are being developed at this time. Construction continues and the first two housing units located, excuse me, first two housing units included in Phase Two of the Public Safety Bond project. As you guys know, this phase of the project is more complex. We are rehabbing the oldest parts of our jail and there have been some minor obstacles, but we're working closely with public properties and the contractors to kind of keep that project on track. And finally, we received an inspirational message from a shared client of the reentry assistance program and the intensive outpatient program offered by CMHC. I get the honor of sharing that letter with you guys today. We did not get a release from the client, so the author will need to remain anonymous at this point, but it's not too often that we get to share really good news with you guys and we want to take advantage of this opportunity to do so. So this was a letter that was sent to our Director of Corrections and it states, "Getting arrested probably saved my life. Before being arrested, I was homeless, living on the street, doing anything I could for enough money to stay high and get a roof over my head. I lied, cheated and stole. I sold and used drugs. I did not care about anyone or anything, least of all myself. I burned every bridge, pushing away every helping hand that reached out to me. Slowly, I became bitter and angry. I blamed everyone but myself for the position I was in. I hurt my family and lost my closest friends and still couldn't understand why I felt so alone. I felt abandoned, like the world had just given up on me, but it was really me that had given up on myself. While sitting in jail, I heard of the reentry program. I was skeptical at first, though I figured I would give it a shot since I really had nothing to lose and everything to gain. I had completed treatment in the past and nothing really stuck with me. I figure that is because I really didn't want to change. I told myself this time, it's going to be different. This time, I would come into it with open eyes and an open mind. I knew this was my last opportunity to change and turn my life around. If I failed this, I was going back to the street, in prison or even dead. I wasn't going, it wasn't going to be easy, that much I knew. I had a lot of time to destroy my life and it was going to take some time and hard work to start to piece it back together. Once I got into RAP, I was presently surprised. Everyone there was very nice. They seemed to care about me and want to help. In RAP, they helped me set lots of small, short-term and manageable goals and everyone there seemed to go above and beyond to make sure I stayed on track. As I progressed through the program and started completing my goals, I started thinking there may be hope after all. I regained a sense of accomplishment and self-worth. Without realizing it, my attitude and thinking had changed. I started caring about myself and my future. I started to believe there was more out there for me than just stealing and getting high. As a part of RAP, I took a chemical dependency evaluation. I was recommended to do IOP, which was offered as part of the reentry program. I was slightly nervous going into this program since I've done it before and absolutely hated it. This time, it turned out to be much different. I came into the program knowing that I had a problem and that I needed help. As it turned out, it was fun and I looked forward to going. It helped me talk in a safe environment and the feedback from the staff and my peers really made me feel accepted. The acceptance I felt made it easy for me to open up and share my thoughts, feelings and experiences with the group. I never felt like I was being judged for my mistakes or looked down upon for being an addict. Since I've completed RAP and IOP, I've found a great job doing something I enjoy. I have all of my identification documents. I've opened a checking account and actually have money in it. I've repaired several personal relationships, including family as well as close friends. I've started on the path to becoming a father to my son. Thanks to these programs, I'm on my way to a better and much more fulfilling life. I now have hope for the future and the tools I need to succeed. Thank you." And he signs it with nine months sober and counting. So again, it's just a nice reminder about the ongoing success of this program and really shows the importance of that collaborative partnership between Corrections and CMHC.
So, you done?
Yep.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, that letter you read is really a great way to end your presentation. I think to me, it emphasizes the philosophy of the Corrections Department, which is a little bit unusual, I think, which is wonderful. It's, second chances exist that you look at the people in there as your neighbors and people that are there for reasons sometimes beyond their control, the way that their lives evolved and so forth, that this is not, you know, they are not, not a group of losers, that they have a chance to change things. And I think your attitude and the attitude of the people that I know that work there and I think all of us have some relationship with them, they're very positive and it helps a lot. So I appreciate that very much. And we're going to have you give these reports from here on out. I'm just kidding. I did want to ask you a couple of questions though. On the population, one of the things that, as it keeps going up, and of course, that's a, to me, that's a red flag that says a lot about just criminal activity that also is not separate from what we're about to talk about with doing some building, the juvenile issue, and that those things seem to be accelerating beyond our control. The numbers are going up. I don't know what they were and I'm not going to ask you today, you know, what were the numbers of the organization 10 years ago and who was there. But anyway, it's, I think we need to face reality that we're, it's pretty packed. And one of the other things that of course affects revenue is that we're not, we're slowing down, I believe is what you said, with our, working with the federal people, the ICE and if we're doing that, then our income is dropping, which is unfortunately one of the things that happens when you have to take care of who's in the house. So that's, that's a problem, but it's, it's avoiding, it's avoiding incarceration. I don't know where those people are going, where the others, where they're going, but it does hurt our, hurt our bottom line. The, I've got several points I want to bring up. One is United Way, we got a report from them on diversion and some of the judges are really doing a pretty good job at it and I think we need to try to figure out even more ways to do that. I know that you're, I mean, if we can get them to avoid, which is what this is all about, avoid going to our facility, it does, it helps a great deal and helps them, I think, as well. So I'm going to try to do something to accelerate that if I can and I'll, I'll work with you on that. What's, what's going on with bail? Are we, are we going anyplace on trying to figure out a way to get some of these people out of jail quicker? Can you give us a snapshot of what's happening?
Yeah, that's been a topic of discussion amongst some of the administrative staff and community members for the last, I don't know, probably six months or so locally. That's been a national conversation for, you know, well over a year now. We do have some upcoming meetings to discuss that further. It's still a topic that we're exploring to find out if we can implement anything at Douglas County to assist with that.
Well, there have been some states and one of them that surprised me a great deal was Texas that has really come up with some bail to get people out of jail, which is pretty remarkable and very progressive of them. And so there are some places that are getting pretty good at it. So, you know, I'd really encourage you to, if it's not on the front burner, to kind of move it closer to a front burner. The, I'm concerned about the hiring. We had a group of people here a few months ago who, and we responded and did things and things have kind of changed a little bit. And I, if you have the figures, I'd like to know how many people have left in the last six months and kind of, almost like doing a, like you do with the number of people who are incarcerated and the number who are bailed out or who leave the facility. I'm very concerned that with all the hiring that we did, that we're kind of back to ground zero. Is that incorrect or over-exaggeration?
It's getting close and I think that's what Mr. Myers reported on last month. He kind of shared with you the number of staff that we hired last year and the number of staff that vacated their position last year, really resulting in a minimal net gain.
Yeah.
I think we all acknowledge that we don't necessarily have a hiring problem. We were able to get a lot of people in the door. We're really struggling with retaining those employees within that first two years of employment, which is why that staff retention and mentoring program has come to the very forefront of our conversation and that's where our strong focus is at.
Well, I don't expect you to give an answer off the top of your head now, but somewhere we need to figure out what to do. Last time this was up, we, the county board raised salaries substantially. I know there's some complaints about the pension system, people saying, "I can't work here 40 years and do what I'm doing." So I'm not sure what the fix is, but we're not alone in this happening, I know. So I just want you to know, I'll speak for myself, that I certainly encourage whatever it is you're doing to try to make up that gap and if you come back and keep us informed on what it is, I suspect you'll have the support of the board in doing what you need to do. need to do, because that's, it's gotta be adequately staffed. Something came up in the last two weeks, and I was quite bothered by it. Someone was talking to me, not know, I don't know what in the world he was thinking, but he was talking about how he has, and I don't care to disclose the organization, but was talking about a person who was acting up and was in a facility that treats, treats mentally ill, okay? I mean, it's part of theirs, not totally, but it's part of their mission. And whatever happened, the person who was being held, they called the police, and the person who was being held in the mental health, health, mental health facility was transferred to our jail. And I think we need to have a serious talk about what we can do to divert folks that are in that situation, because we, we have terrible, that's a terrible burden to put on the jail. And I know that, I was told by Dr. Foxall that on one occasion, a rescue squad pulled into the Sallyport, and a man was strapped down and convulsing and wild, and, and they tried to unload him at our facility, and he was turned away. Now, where he went, I don't know. But it's another issue that, you know, and I, it's a big issue that all of us are concerned about, mental health and how we treat people. We gotta figure it out. So I'm worried about that, because I know that we are, we have so many people suffering from mental illness in our facility. We gotta figure that out. We just can't continue doing this. So that's, I think we're gonna have to have a summit on it and try to, you know, get all the commissioners, is this a priority? If it isn't, then we need to move on. But if it is a priority, then we need to decide what we're gonna do about it and try to lay out some groundwork. The, I guess those are probably the primary things that I would mention. I am concerned about the medical, it's, cost is pretty high, and, without making any other comments, I hope that we have good luck with who we're choosing. It's, uh, there are some organizations that we run, it's just like the Health Center over on 42nd Street, and it's like the Youth Center next door. Corrections is in the same boat. When people are ill and they're in our custody, they can't say, "I want a second opinion." They get what they get. And so it has to be medical care that is some of the best, if not the best, in the community, has to be there, because people rely on it. They can't say, "I don't like what you said, and so I don't want to just take a Tylenol. You know, my arm hurts." You know, we need to, we gotta figure that out. So I hope we're looking at the human side as well. Okay, well, I'll get off my high horse, and thank you for your, for your work, Ms. Redmond. You're a real terrific addition to the leadership over there, and you always have been, but now you're ready, you're right there. And I personally appreciate it, because I know of your skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. In Section Two, under the reentry services, for people who've been there just a very short time, is that short time being defined as just a few hours? Okay. So if somebody comes in and they're homeless, we're helping them find housing?
We're making every effort to do so. As you know, that's gonna, that's gonna be a real challenge for somebody that you only have a short time to interact with.
And if they've been diagnosed with a mental illness, are we helping them find medication and that type of help?
I don't know that that type of evaluation is being done. We're talking about individuals that are in our custody for 72 hours or less, so I don't know that that type of assessment is being performed on them.
Are we, if they come in without identification, are we helping them procure identification?
Yes, that is a part of that process.
Good. Could you give me a list of some, or rattle off right now, depending on what you'd like to do, some of the things we do provide them?
I can follow up with that.
Please.
Kind of, as I mentioned when I was reporting on that, that's in the very beginning stages. So we, we, we are also trying to figure out how we can interact with individuals and what level of services we can provide, but I will follow up on the list of items that are being done now.
That'd be great. And email it to all of us. The letter that you read, which was very nice, the gentleman said, "While sitting in jail, I heard about the reentry program." Do we make sure that every person in ourselves hears about the reentry program?
Yes, it's very widely publicized within the jail.
And how is it publicized?
It's available in our inmate handbook, that all inmates are provided upon intake, and we also advertise it on kind of our connection, our Corrections Network television.
Good.
In, in each of the housing units.
And is it in multiple languages?
In the inmate handbook, that's a great question. I don't want to speak out of turn. I'll have to follow up on the handbook. I do believe the handbook is translated in Spanish. I don't know that that's being done on Corrections Network, so I'll follow up.
And this gentleman said, "This time, I decided to go into IOP," which is intensive outpatient, I assume?
It is.
Okay, 'cause people in the audience may not know. And this gentleman or person, I don't know if it's a man or a woman, sounds like it'd be great if he could come back and mentor every now and then. I don't know if we're in communication with him, but, and I don't know what kind of great job he found, but hopefully it is going great, and encouraging him to keep it up. Every now and then, we talk about night court. Night court would be beneficial in a weekend court and turnaround, would it not?
Yes, I think that would be beneficial.
Okay.
Either night or weekend court.
And on the mentoring program for our new hires, two years or less, we're providing psychological help, emotional help, we're providing counseling, we're providing attaboy, slaps on the back, and let me tell you how I handled this situation?
Those are all things that we want to cover in the mentoring program that we're working to establish. What we're acknowledging is that there's not so much of a warm handoff between kind of the training department and the initial weeks that they spend in training, and then once they're deployed to their, their team, and, and we're hoping to help them along in that process with more of a hands-on process.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. It may be more expensive, but I think it'll be cheaper in the long run because of the cost of training.
That's our desire.
And we make sure that all new employees are very well of the EAP, the Employee Assistance Plan?
That is covered, yes.
The number is going up, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out. And, you know, a lot of that is because of prosecutor discretion, prosecution, yeah, I can't say the word, but the discretion of the prosecutor, and also in the discretion of the officer who is arresting or booking the person in. Are we, I know we're booking people in who really shouldn't be, such as last year about this time, maybe it was two years ago, the person who was short $2 on paying a bill at a restaurant because they had a coupon, and because the person was mentally ill, had a, had a breakdown in the place and was arrested for disorderly conduct. And I know we have a lot of cases like that. Is there a way we can handle that, that you see?
We continue to have ongoing conversations with those arresting agencies about the site and release program. That's still a topic that we discuss frequently and encourage, and they are supporting of that. The rise in our inmate population is nothing new. You guys have heard that over and over for months, over the last year, and we continue to address ways to deal with that increase in the inmate population.
I noticed that we have a lot of client goals, summaries for discharged patients, and almost everything shows a zero. No progress, partially achieved, achieved. That's on page 23. Is that just because the numbers didn't get entered, or is that?
We do have some missing data this month. The administrator of our work release program experienced a death in the family, and he was out at the time that this report had to be submitted.
I, I kind of thought something was, 'cause it's unusual to see zeros under all of these different categories.
Sure.
Then also, I noticed in the program we offer to the inmates, there are a lot of programs we offer that they don't attend. Is that because we don't have somebody teaching it at this time, or?
I'm unaware of any shortages in our program instructors. We have a lot of relationships with providers in the community to provide those services. I can follow up on that with our program's administrator, but...
Well, again, there are so many zeros that I was thinking it might have something to do with data entry, but that's all I have. Thank you.
We'll follow up on some of that missing data as well with the return of the work release administrator.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Amber, really appreciate your work and leadership, as some others have stated. On the letter that you read to us, will someone be calling that gentleman from time to time to see how it's going so that he knows that we care?
I can certainly relay that request.
Yeah, I think that would be good, so, 'cause it's easy to fall back. You know, no one really is caring or whatever, so whatever you can do there. And then this is an idea of, just a thought, you know, again, it's Commissioner Boyle touched on it, the staffing issue, and Commissioner Craft and all of us are concerned about that. If you decide with Mike that you want to meet with two or three of us at a time before our county board meeting or another day, let us know that we'll come to the correction facility or meet here before a board meeting, just for ideas to talk about that retention and what we can do there, because it's so important, and it's important from a selfish way for myself. Commissioner Boyle and I work on the budget, and if we have the overtime, instead of the regular people working there, it's increasing your budget, and that presents a problem, which I know Doug Kagan follows us on. So whatever we can do, we want to listen and see if we can do what you might suggest or talk about ideas. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amber, on the, when we were talking about the bond, on page 27, and maybe this is part of the data that didn't get completely inserted in the report, but it says, "Client release summary bonded out," and it has one for the current month of December. Is there, can you start providing us the number that are sitting out their bonds in jail?
People incarcerated on a bond amount? Okay.
That seems, I mean, one, and I know, again, it's just December, seems like an unrealistic, but maybe it is the realistic number, but maybe if we take...
Well, this enclosure is specific, sorry to interrupt, to our programs, department, so it, it's not necessarily the individual sitting in our main jail. We certainly have more people bonding out on a daily basis.
Okay, that's good to hear.
From the main facility, yeah.
Okay, so, but if we could have that as part of the...
Yeah, I will have to look into that. It may be only, if, we may only be able to report a snapshot, but that...
That's fine, just so we have some clearer understanding of it. And then I'm glad, or I think we need to talk more frequently about the night court and weekend court. I know the judges, when I brought it up many years ago, weren't very happy about, talking about it, but I have asked Mike to revisit a cost analysis on those two programs and bring it to the board so we can look at whether or not it's something feasible to go back to the judges and talk about. I definitely have seen and believed that it would be beneficial, especially for long weekends, weekends, long weekends and holiday weekends. And then, I guess that was it. I can't remember, there was one more thing, but, I, I can't remember the last one. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Commissioner Bergerson brought up something I am so much in support of. I think we ought to try a couple of other angles. One is, we have, Senator Lathrop is now head of the Judiciary Committee, and I think we need to talk to him about the possibility of legislation adding a judge, a night court judge. You know, Commissioner Kavanaugh and I can tell you that there's about, oh, I don't know, 4,500 lawyers in Omaha, Douglas County, and, you know, we need lots of lawyers, that's for sure. But, seriously, there are some, there are some people, and of course, as we talked before, Judge Scrupa did a terrific job and was appointed temporarily. She wasn't a night court, but she was a temporary judge. I think we ought to explore that with the legislature. I also, I was at a reception and recently at UNMC, and I did go over and talk to the governor for a moment and asked, told him I would like to visit with a member of his staff about some ways that possibly we can help with moving some property tax dollars around and talking directly with them about some of our problems. I've been in touch with them, and so I am gonna, I certainly don't have all the answers, nor do I have all the questions, so, but I would like to get some suggestions from you, and it doesn't have to be me, myself, but it is his chief of staff, and I do intend to visit with him about some of the things that I think we can do to, where we need some help, and this is certainly one of them. It's a, it's a terrific idea, and it makes a great deal of sense, so we'll work on it. Thanks.
Seeing the note, thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Most adjourned, the board of corrections?
Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So now call to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Craft?
Still here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Still here. Item one, minutes and claims. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. Most adjourned, the board. Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
I'll be abstaining as there's a check.
To my company.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining. All the commissioners voting yes.
Item two is the consent agenda. There's nine items there. I'd like to note particularly item A, and when moved, asks for moving with this change. In the last, in the bottom paragraph, there is a, it's been changed from what's on yours, I think, on the bottom paragraph, and it's not letting things come up online right now, so I can't see it. It says, "Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Douglas County Commissioners that the attached plan is hereby approved, and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office is hereby authorized to dispose of the vehicles." I think the version on, in the book says the chair. So with that change, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
With the approval of the consent agenda with that change?
There is a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Seeing no questions, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for a citizen to comment on a board, on board of commissioners-related items, not on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on to the committees in discussion. So this, I'd like to handle this, items, well, let me, there's a budget report and finances there.
As presented, we did have a meeting this morning just to talk about the budget. Commissioner Boyle, myself, and Joe Lorenz, our finance director, and Mark Craft joined us for part of that discussion, so, as presented.
Okay. Then let's go, what I'd like to do is items two, under, two and three under finance, and item one under child and youth services are kind of in the same thing. It depends on what the board's action is. What I'd like to do at this time, because this has been discussed, I'm hoping that individuals will make their comments pretty concise. I think, I don't know how much new there is for this. What I'd like to do is have anybody that wants to comment on the related items comment now, and then we'll go to the board for their action. So this is in relations to items two and three under finance and one under child and youth services, the bond issue for the new facility. Is there anyone that wants to comment on these matters now? Please, anybody.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna be considering these separately?
Yes.
Two, three? Okay.
The discussion is all relevant, so I'll have that now, and then we'll go separately.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Doug Kagan, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our taxpayer group urges commissioners to vote no on issuing revenue bonds for the Justice Center or Juvenile Center, as this board has not yet revealed the cost of renovating the MUD building... Our taxpayer group urges commissioners to vote no on issuing revenue bonds for the Justice Center or Juvenile Center, as this board has not yet revealed the cost of renovating the MUD building, or decided definitely on the site for a new juvenile center. Again, we ask the board to backtrack. We urge a process like that used in the 2016 bond issue that includes 100% public competitive bidding. Commissioners and/or the building commission would retain professional services of an expert consultant to assist in the development of a request for qualifications for interested bidder teams, and assist the county in award of the contract. This process also should allow for consideration of alternatives by offsetting any reduction in construction costs by predetermined amount of internal costs borne by the county due to having separate facilities. The method to determine the internal cost to the county must be established prior to the involved teams developing their respective bids, as a matter of transparency and fairness. The county should and would issue a request for qualifications to select a short list of qualified developer, designer, contractor, bidder teams. Each team in its bidding would have the discretion to propose each facility on the preferred site, or propose an alternative site. A short list of qualified teams would develop a design and construction cost based on a program and site development requirements developed by the county with its architect, expert, consultant. The contract would be awarded using a commonly used in private practice, commonly used technically acceptable least cost selection analysis, that would include construction cost plus any differential internal cost to the county. At this time, we simply do not know if there exist less costly alternatives. Therefore, we strongly urge you to delay this vote. I gave you all a copy of this speech, and on the second sheet, there's more details. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. This does pertain to county governance, so I'm going to say it once again. Hopefully, I'll get the finish. But I'm reading this, rules of orders for this meeting, citizens' comments, time for five minutes on any topic not on the agenda. Quote, "Not on the agenda," as it pertains to the covenants. We just heard something from Doug Kagan, but those topics are on the agenda? I get interrupted for those things, he doesn't? Please revise your rules of order, because he would be out of order bringing this up when it's already on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. I'm glad to talk to all of you again. I live in Bellevue, Nebraska. I'm Norma Leclair, but I probably live closer to Omaha than a lot of the folks in West Omaha. I come here very often. I spend a lot of my tax dollars here. You're going to vote today on $120 million that does not belong to you. The people with those dollars need to have a vote and plenty of information. As a mother, I am very careful with our family budget. You can't always, we can't always afford shiny and new. You are city fathers, and as taxpayers, we are appealing to you to think of our pocketbooks. The juvenile detention center already belongs to you with plenty of space. Why not put a couple of courtrooms out there? That way, the juveniles would not have to be transported at all. There's certainly plenty of room for the 48-bed proposal, and we could see how this is going to work. No expensive skyway necessary. This would save a tremendous amount of money, and you might begin to regain some trust with your taxpayers. I hear $120 million being tossed around like it was a dozen doughnuts. You have a building in litigation, and now you've offered $6 million for the MUD building. This is before any improvements for accommodating the lawyers and judges. Please slow down with our money. By the way, I frequently buy doughnuts for people who really can hardly afford a doughnut. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else?
I'm Nicole Leclair, her daughter, also from Bellevue, Nebraska, also spent a lot of time downtown, about 15 minutes to get here. So, Happy New Year. I'm here again. I'm here today to appeal to your hearts now and your future selves. With the decision you make today, you're part of Omaha's history and future. How do you wish to be remembered? Today, by Omaha's citizens, voters and taxpayers, and in the future, by today's kids when they're grown. Will you be remembered as commissioners that believed in preserving and growing downtown Omaha's energy and businesses and residents and visitors' views and opinions, which mean, can mean more commerce or less commerce? Or commissioners that decided a juvenile jail or detention center, semantics, was the better choice? The design of a juvenile justice center, that as of the last report, it might change today, had no windows or natural light for kids who are already in trouble. Even here, you have natural light. So, the group of us who have been attending these meetings for about six months are not opposed to you all having more room for judges and lawyers. At the administrative services meeting last week, I do want to point out that lawyer Joyce Suter said over and over again that there are going to be less and less kids in the center. That would be wonderful. The question I might raise connected to that is, why do we need more space for judges and lawyers? Also, as mentioned, that there's no calendar of meetings for the 501(c)(3) board this year. I'm on some committees where we don't have a budget that you all are having, and we have a general plan of our meetings. So, as far as the J Juvenile Justice Center, I will again encourage for you all to consider being a leader in its designs and plans. Stop doubting what we already have in space and programs, because they're both great. There could be some updating in the space, it's true. We could give more money to the programs, that's what they really need there, instead of a new building, but the current location is more than adequate. What would you think of officials from Seattle, Minneapolis, all these other cities that you've visited, came to Omaha to learn from us? I stand here with hundreds of people behind me, you don't see them, because they can't be here, but I've talked to many, many people in the last six months who agree with me. I'm sure there are people that agree with, some of you that don't agree with me as well, but there's a lot of people behind me, they can't be here. So, I'm asking that, let's be proud of Omaha, who we are now, who we can be. Let's make this work together, let your constituents have a say on their city, their money, and their future. And you're part of that, it's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
My name is Carol Zechek, and I live in the Benson area, and I have lived in Omaha pretty much my entire life. And again, reiterating, reiterating a lot of what Doug Kagan had said, I feel that it is much more important to have public input, alternative locations, proposals, and bids should be listened to by seven council members that is determining the fate of 450,000 population of Omaha. My taxes will indeed go up, and I am well aware of that if all of this goes through, and I want it to all slow down. It does not have to be built within the next year or two. Again, and I will also stress that I am totally in favor of building more courtroom space and space for lawyers here, that's fine. However, I toured in December, I toured the Detention Center on 41st. I think it's a great facility. It could use a little updating, but the fact that they already have enough room for up to 80 children, in the event that there is a huge crisis, I don't know how you would handle an overflow past 40 children, because even if you have enough room for 48, that really is technically only 40 capacity. At least according to Nebraska Crime Commission, Division of Jail Standards, Denny McComber, I spoke with him on the phone yesterday, they also had not even received anything further than a letter of intent, they've not even received a schematic of any kind. So, again, all I'm saying is, is that the public should be allowed to be involved in the process of all of the decision-making, all of it. We have a voice, we have ideas that could be helpful, and it should not be allowed to just be decided upon by seven people, and it should also not be only one or two possible proposals. I have only seen one from HDR, and that's been the only one, there have not been anything else. So, I believe this needs to be voted on by the citizens of Omaha, and I would like to be part of that decision-making myself. And that is all I have to say at the moment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman and commissioners, my name's Bruce Carpenter, have been involved with the project and have had some recent conversations with some of the neighbors of the surrounding area, and what they would like to do is ensure that there's a meeting, they would like to have us share with them the site plan and the details of the project, and then have an opportunity to discuss and have a public hearing at this board on the, on the final design, which I agree with, and if, if that's agreed to with the board, they wouldn't speak in opposition of moving the bond forward. So, it's been good discussion, and I think it's fair to continue and have discussions with the neighbors on the final design and the design issues. Thank you.
I'll show you, that'll happen. Anyone else?
Good morning, I think it's still morning, Kathleen Jamrosy, 1614 South 93rd Avenue. And, something Nicole said, I want to thank everyone who spoke and who has continued to try and learn as much about this project as possible, and I think I've said it before, I know that everyone wants the best for Omaha, and the best for the Flatiron area where the proposed site for the courthouse annex will be. I have paid taxes, because I am a neighbor to that spot, I am going to be looking right at that construction zone, at 1722 St. Mary's at the Flatiron Cafe. Since 1995, I've been paying my taxes. And I also have a little bit of background with juvenile justice. I was a family teacher at Boys Town, my husband and I, before we opened the restaurant, and I will, as a result of the work and research that I've done recently around this project, I will be going back to Boys Town, I will be working on the crisis hotline. It is something that I feel very strongly about, and I know that folks on this board do also. So, I appreciate Bruce Carpenter's willingness to ask for a public hearing so that we have input into the site plan, but I also have tremendous reservations about the juvenile justice piece of this project, because everything I have been able, and the first time I heard it described, the wraparound services and the co-location, it all sounded great. It made perfect sense, until I started actually reading the research on putting kids in an urban high-rise is the last thing that these kids need. Community-based treatment facilities is the way of the future, and something Nicole said, why can't we open this up to a broader discussion where Omaha, Nebraska is where people will be visiting, to see how we are handling our troubled youth? I think we've got all the talent in the world that we can draw upon and not rush to failure here, but rush to something more aspirational than putting kids in a jail in a high-rise, that will effectively, it's, it's a dark mark to put in the neighborhood, but it's also a really, I think, a bad choice for our troubled youth. Thank you.
Anyone else? Again, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner Boyle on items two and three. Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have some questions that I think I'd like to ask Mr. Carpenter at some point, but I don't know what your, how much leeway I have, what you, but I do, I offer these two resolutions, much like what I did last time. I, I think there is something that we all agree on, and that is the need for a courthouse. And I am still concerned, you know, we have, obviously, there's still some very serious questions that are being asked about the Juvenile Justice Center and some things that are coming up there. So, what I would like to do, and I'll just get, cut to the chase if I could, I would offer the first resolution, I think, let me see here where we are, let me see, I've gone all past all that stuff. The first resolution is the issuing of revenue, revenue bonds for the construction of a justice center, and it is difficult, because we don't know, first of all, what the cost is, we don't know if we're remodeling the MUD and building and using that for part of our facility. There's still some questions out there that I think should be answered, and I also, at some point, want to talk to, ask our finance guy, what all of this has, what effect this has on our, on our mill levy, our, and taxes on an average home and so forth, but I guess what I'll do first off is offer that resolution that we construct, that we issue revenue bonds for construction of a justice center, and do that separately from the juvenile center. So I would offer that resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion, that's what I have a second.
Okay. Then, having the experience of that, I think what I'll do is just pull the other one, because they really don't work very well together, excuse me, separate. So, if there's not one, there shouldn't be the other, so I'll just remove that third resolution, and as I said, though, I do have some questions I'd like to ask at some point, ask Mr. Carpenter and some others.
With that, then, we'll go to item one on child and youth services, a resolution requiring the Omaha Public Building Commission to issue $120 million revenue bonds for the Justice Center project. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion by Commissioner Borges, and is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Boyle, you want to ask your questions now? Let's ask.
To ask, if I could, first of all, it's a kind of a ballpark figure, 120 million. I want to ask Mr. Lorenz, if I, if I could, what, what effect will issuing 120 million in revenue bonds have on, we're the ones who have to pay it, so, tell me, who, where does it show up on a tax bill, and what would the cost be, the cost be to an owner of a, say, a $200,000 home? Can you tell us?
Yes. You know, this, the way this would be structured, it would be a Public Building Commission bond.
Right.
That would be, the debt service would be reimbursed by Douglas County, and as, as that debt service, and also any related maintenance, or really any incremental cost involved for the courthouse annex and the juvenile detention center would be covered by Douglas County. So, we've had pulmonary-- So we've had pulmonary meetings with the building commission and the underwriter, and the thinking is, as we go into the budget for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year, that we would see a mill levy increase driven by this project of one point five cents in the near term, which would equate to a thirty-dollar increase for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar, a home valued at two-hundred-thousand dollars. And then we would see over the two to three years that this project is, it will take to construct it. What happens, we'll have better estimates of the maintenance cost and the ongoing support cost, as well as a better estimate of what the tax base is increasing within Douglas County. And then we would determine if there were another incremental tax increase in the levy that would have to be done. But at that point, there's too much uncertainty to really say what, if there would or what that would be. So at this point, we are just projecting for this year's budget, a penny and a half increase to the mill levy.
Okay, well, you know, we've had discussions, and I don't mean to flush you out on this, but I guess I have to. We had discussions, unless I misunderstood what you were saying, and I hope I'm not, I don't feel like I'm breaking a confidence because I'm a public employee and so are you. But I understood you when you told me that this was going to, you're going to try to split this up to, so that we don't punish the taxpayers or, in the first round, that we'd cut this, it's going to be a mill levy increase of nearly twelve, no, twelve cents. And that twelve cents would be split into somehow some periods of five and a half or something, some such thing to soften the blow.
No, I don't think we ever talked twelve cents.
Or eleven and a half, maybe.
No, I think the number that we got floated out initially was two to three cents. Maybe that's a twelve percent increase, but not actual.
Okay, we'll talk about the percentage increase then. It's a twelve percent increase, eleven percent?
Well, right now, the mill levy is twenty-eight, I think, twenty-eight point three cents. So one point five cents over twenty-eight point three is, right now, we're talking about a five percent increase to the mill levy.
Okay.
The county's levy.
The county portion of the mill levy, yes. I'm sorry.
So I, what I'm trying to get to is, if at all possible, is some figure that taxpayers can chew on that, so they understand, and apparently me, understand as well, what this project is going to cost, what it's going to do to the county's mill levy, and how much a homeowner can expect to pay. And I, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's only thirty dollars a year for how many years? And is it going to be stable for thirty? I mean, do we have operating costs in here at all?
There, right now, there, the operating costs are not really in that penny and a half. The penny and a half is really for the debt service on the one hundred and twenty million dollars, which, that's what I said, we're going to have to wait and see what the operating costs look like they're going to be in terms of maintenance and support. But then, we're also going to look at what the offset is in the property tax base. I mean, this year, the initial projection is that property values in Omaha are going to increase five percent. So if, you know, as that goes out into the future, as the base increases, that means the amount of the levy increase would decrease as it would be offset by an increase in the tax base.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, but I think that's, still means that the bottom line taxes, property taxes, will go up for property owners. And I don't, the word wait to take a look at operations is alarming. We're talking about building a substantially large facility, and we're not even talking about operations, what it's going to cost to pay the building commission to clean the place, to secure the place, to do all those things. And to me, that is part of the, should be part of the discussion of the, of the building at some point. And I just want as much information as possible about what this could cost, may cost, and I understand the fluctuations of valuations going up and so forth. But if we have a recession that occurs, what happens then? I mean, I think we need to be prepared for all these things, and the more information we have, the better. And let me make it clear, I support, and somehow this always gets lost whenever I raise questions, I support totally, completely, I was involved in it at the ground level when I talked to Commissioner Borgson about doing this, when I got appointed to the building commission. I support totally the merging of all of these services under one roof. It's just the question of which roof. Because I am personally concerned, after looking at options, I am very concerned that when we talk about building a finite building, that we are obviously locking ourselves into the size of the facility. We received a letter, and I hope, I guess I'm not, it was addressed to all of us, but one of the things I want to mention is that the letter we received from Sherwood, which I want to say at the outset, is an incredibly, incredibly positive organization for us. We are so fortunate to have their generosity and their attitude. It cannot, it cannot be misunderstood, the support that I personally have for the Sherwood Foundation and its work. It is a remarkable, valuable contributor to the well-being of our community. One of the things that it mentions in its letter is that the facility, it says, the first point, no more than forty-eight beds in a facility that is non-institutional and reflects a trauma-informed environment. Well said, but I'm worried, forty-eight beds? In the past, we've had to expand the youth center because it wasn't large enough. In the past, we've had to expand Douglas County Correction Facility because it wasn't large enough. And in the past, we're sitting in a building that was built because the other building wasn't large enough. All these offices that are in this building, we're in the building next door at one time, until the seventies. So I mean, we need to face reality. I don't think government's going to shrink as much as Larry would like, would like it to, and maybe Mr. Kagan. But the point is that we need to deal with true hard, hard facts, and then we can make a knowing decision. And I have questions for Mr. Carpenter, I don't mean to take up all this time, so I might just simply say that I'd like to reserve some time to ask some questions. But I think it's time for us to take a hard look at what are, what are the actual costs of this? Are we remodeling the M U D building? What are we doing with the United Way building that we own across the street now? What's the plan? And I don't see it totally, and I don't, I don't mean to be so critical, but I think I have a job to ask those questions. And that's why I'm asking.
Thank you. Let me say, Commissioner Boyle, to the question that was asked, if you, I mean, the question you want in respects to the request and, I think, which was going to be the original intent, is to have that question answered in Mr. Carpenter's request that was made. I think all of that opportunity will be there to get vetted on that for sure. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Down at the Capitol, on the side of the building, actually on the front of the building, is carved in stone the following words, salvation of the state, the salvation of the state is in the watchfulness of the citizens. So watch carefully today. A vote for this proposal is a vote for a unnecessary property tax increase. A vote for this today, and you can watch this vote, if you vote for this today, you're voting for a property tax increase that, if you want to cut to the chase, is going to be over ten percent to every property taxpayer in Douglas County. We have spent months and months without a single penny of taxpayer support on an alternative plan that's better, cheaper, and smarter. What we're proposing to do is save the taxpayers of Douglas County from an unnecessary property tax increase. A vote for this is a vote for a unnecessary property tax increase. It won't be better, cheaper, and smarter. It will be worse, wasteful, and wrong. It's always the right time to do the right thing. And what we need to do today is take a breath and not approve a wasteful property tax increase, but rather take a look at this project from the point of view of the children and the taxpayers. It's apparent that this is being rushed by people with financial stake in the completion of this project. They're here today, you heard from Mr. Carpenter, he's being paid to complete this project. His company will make money off of this project. Mr. Ochoa is here today from Burlington Capital, he's being paid to see this project go forward. The bound counsel from Baird Home paid to see this project go forward. The private corporation that they work for has representatives on this board. Clearly, an apparent conflict of interest, you're either representing the taxpayers or these individuals who are being paid to see this project go forward at taxpayer expense. We have not seen a single drawing of what this project is going to look like on the M U D site that we are in the process of obtaining now. It's ironic that we hear Mr. Carpenter, who's being paid to see this project go forward, say that he'd like to meet and show those plans to the neighbors when they haven't been shown to this board. And yet, we're being asked to approve a unnecessary property tax increase sight unseen of this project. While we hold properties, we own properties that we have shown can service this project adequately, we have acquired properties that we don't even know now what we're going to do with in the form of the O H A building, and that apparently is going to be addressed later. But you've already paid for that, and those projects are now being abandoned on that site and will be redesigned and refocused on the M U D site. Nobody's seen any of that, and no public hearings have been held on that. We held a hearing a week ago where we talked to, again, individuals informed on policy and construction. It's the latest in a dozen or more hearings that we've held, the only public hearings on this that have been held on a systematic basis. And nobody that serves on the private corporation deigned to even attend, although they were here in the building. Mr. Carpenter was here, meeting with Chairman of our board at the same time, didn't have the time to come and propose in public what he's happy to talk about behind closed doors. This is wrong. We should slow down, take a breath, and do this right. This is a large, unnecessary property tax increase. You just heard some talk between Commissioner Boyle and our finance director about how large. Well, here's what's happening there. They're going to break the property tax increase at half so that you won't notice that it's over a ten percent increase in your property tax. They want us to do half of it now, and then, oh, once we determine that there might be some operating costs for this huge one-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar capital construction facility, we'll do the other half. It'll be over ten percent when it's done. An unnecessary property tax increase is being voted on right here, right now. Watch this vote. If commissioners vote yes, they're voting for a large, unnecessary property tax increase. And if they vote no, they're voting against it. We have outlined better, cheaper, smarter ways to go, using lower interest rates, allowing a vote of the people as we did in two thousand and sixteen on the public safety bond, and utilizing property that we already own. Bottom line is, they do a better job of servicing our juvenile justice center, our juvenile justice needs, our children, and not least of all, our taxpayers. Those are being voted on today. If you vote no on this unnecessary property tax increase, you're voting yes for the people's right to determine how this project should go forward. So citizens, watch carefully how this vote goes. A yes vote for this resolution is a vote for an unnecessary property tax increase with no vote of the people. And a no vote is a vote against that and the alternative, better, cheaper, smarter, with a vote of the people. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, no further, okay, Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. When our chief financial officer says there's going to be a five percent increase, it makes a better story to round it up to over ten. So never let the truth interfere with a good story. It's now over ten percent, despite what Joel Lorenz just told us. We claim that everybody here supports a courthouse annex. We claim that. We haven't always. We did have one commissioner first saying courthouse is big enough, let's expand the jail instead. But now, all seven commissioners say we need a courthouse annex. Show me, when your plans are similar in cost to ours, how that can be done with no tax increase. Suddenly, this one is twice the tax increase of what our chief financial officer tells us, but somehow, we can magically have other people spend a comparable amount of money with no tax increase. Where does that money come from? Oh, this building's going to have maintenance. We know it's going to have maintenance. Your building is not going to have maintenance? Wow. Oh, they're both going to have maintenance. They're both going to require capital to put them up. To pretend or to keep telling the public that this is an unnecessary tax increase, that it's over ten percent, is just wrong. All we're doing is directing the building commission, asking them to follow through with one hundred million, twenty million dollars of revenue bonds. We have known for a year what this project was going to cost, and yet, people keep throwing out other figures. What we haven't known is the alternative, which has bounced from fifty to one hundred and fifteen million. It's all, I don't know what, what it even would entail. We've been told we can't build on the space we've got next to Perrin's building, it would collapse Perrin's building. Yeah, we don't care. Never let the truth interfere with a good story. This is the way to go. We've been talking about this for over a year, and people keep saying, oh, slow down, slow down, you're rushing this. We told the legislature over a year ago, hold off on giving us another judge. Give us a chance to try to make some quarters for them. Give them an opportunity to be prepared for it. And now, we keep saying, oh, slow down, slow down, much too fast, we've only been at this for years. It's time. We've got a good plan before us, it's time to move forward. But I resent the implication that one plan is free and one plan is going to be really, really expensive. Ain't true. They're both going to cost money. They're both going to take maintenance. That's just a fact of life.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I think, you know, I, I think, you know, the difficulty, Commissioner Duda, with coming up with, I disagree with you. Obviously, it's going to be operations, and I certainly didn't mean to imply there wouldn't be, but it's just that it needs to be factored in, and there are some differences. And one of them is that, a pretty important one, is that when Mr. Kavanaugh, when I talked to him after visiting with neighbors and had my epiphany, if you will, I asked the county board for twenty thousand dollars so that we could at least explore an alternative, and we didn't get the money. So there has been no alternative offered that is funded to the extent that the original plan has been. We've paid one hundred, one point four million dollars so far, I believe. And so we spent that money, but we have not, we have not offered an alternative, and we didn't give it the kind of respect or the kind of hearing that I think it needs in a public forum. We simply made up our minds, and I was part and parcel of that, too, and I regret that I contributed so much to that. I, there's nothing wrong with looking at an alternative. The situation is, and I voiced it when we were meeting, I was concerned about the fact that we had some, some firms, really good ones, locked in, and frankly, at really reasonable charges, particularly to the Burlington Group, that we, they were willing to do things at a reduced rate for us, which is really terrific, except that it bothered me that we didn't have, we didn't use our engineer and architects committee to review those things. It wouldn't have taken, you know, just because they're who they are. who they are doesn't mean that there aren't others out there. So, in any event, that bothered me at the beginning. And then, we got into the nonprofit group, which concerns me, and I asked that it be, I asked that the meetings be moved to a County Board meeting right at the beginning, so that it can be on Cox, and people can hear it without having to come down here what's going on. And that got nowhere either. But, so, there's been, and I know it's been discussed, I remember quite a long time ago when you talked about, and there was some talk about actually building a courthouse on the front lawn, that really went over like a lead blimp. Remember that one? Okay, well, that was 96 million, I think. And so, it has been a long time, and a long time coming. And that's why I think there's agreement that there needs to be something done with the courthouse itself. But I think it's been, we have presented ourselves in a way that indicates a lack of transparency, and I really don't like that, because I think we've tried, not hard enough, but we've tried to be candid, and I don't think anyone here is trying to hide anything, except that I think we blew it. We should have been out in Waterloo, we should have been in Valley, we should have been in North Omaha, and some of us have gone to those places and so forth. But really, a rigorous public hearing of this, so that people could step up and have their views heard. But I think that's, that's one of the problems, is that we haven't had a true alternative. And so, Mr. Kavanaugh, with his resources, has done what he could. And while, there were some errors, I suppose, there've been errors on all sides, I guess, but we really haven't given it the kind of hearing that it needs. And that, that's why I'm coming to what Mr. Kagan has said, and I agree with him completely about the need for us to talk about it publicly. And some of the things I need to talk about further, for example, is the costs of financing these bonds. From what I understand, and I'll again ask our coin counter up here in the balcony, Mr. Lorenz, who I might say we are so fortunate to have him as our finance guy, but there's a difference on the financing of about $1 million, and I'm not sure if it's annually or what it is, but I'll ask him for the figure. But Douglas County has a AAA credit rating, and the Building Commission does not. So, the cost of the bonds is different. It's more money if we use the Building Commission. And secondly, if this is really such a good deal, I really, I think we, we should have the vote of the people at this point, because I think it's gotten too controversial. And if we had meetings and talked about it and explained it, I think the people of this community, knowing Omaha as well as I think I know it, will approve of it. They will. Once they hear what needs to be done, and once they get to see what Sherwood is willing to contribute once again to the well-being of these children. But Joe, what's, what's the difference between the, if we did, did Douglas County financing with the AAA versus the Building Commission? What's, what's the difference on that? Can you annualize it or do anything?
Yes, yes, I do, I have that. The, our underwriter, bond underwriter, estimates an interest rate differential of five to 10 basis points as the difference between the county's AAA rating and the public building commission's AA-plus bond rating. So, assuming, let's take, do it conservatively and say it would be a 10 basis points difference, that would equate to $60,000 per year on an annual basis. And given the 30-year life of the bonds, 30 years times 60,000 a year would be $1,008,000. But then, the caveat, the trade-off is certainty versus uncertainty is that we could place the bonds very quickly using the public building commission, whereas if we would go to a vote of the people, that would have to wait till the next general election, which runs, and no one can predict interest rates, because if you did, you probably wouldn't have to work for a living. But you do run the risk that if rates would go up, given the volatility in the bond markets, a 10 basis point increase in bonds over, you know, six or nine months, you know, that's, given the volatility recently in the capital markets, the bond rates increase or decrease by that much almost on a weekly basis. So, that's kind of the trade-off there.
Well, I, and I understand that, and I appreciate the information. I think, you know, the, the Building Commission was established to, really, to build essential buildings for the service of the public. And that was done with the parking garage next door, it was done with this building. No vote of the people on, on those two structures. And I, and I'm not, I have nothing against, you know, what the building, I'm on it, and I've been trying to get on it for years. But I do have to tell you, you know, there is a bill in the legislature because of what's happened here in Omaha, to require a vote of the people on Building Commission bond issues. We have, we have managed to throw something into the lake here that people don't like to see. And so, I think, you know, we may get exactly what we deserve. And it, unfortunately, I mean, and I don't want this to be accusatory, but we have really not done our job on talking to the people and listening to the people, even more importantly, and not that, you know, any one of you is right. There is no disagreement on, what I've heard, putting all these facilities in one building, it's a question of where. Are we going to need to expand it? Aaron Hanson, I saw him at Tom Marfisi's funeral. And Aaron Hanson is a police officer that I hold in very high regard, who's been involved in a lot of operations that are very important to our community. And I believe he's still an active police officer. And I walked up to say hello to him, and he turned his head and he looked at me, and he said, it's not big enough. I mean, out of the blue, not even hello, how are you, or too bad about Tom, it's not big enough. And so, we visited for a few minutes, and he, we don't know where we'll take these young people. And now, Sherwood's saying 48 beds is the limit. So, picture, picture that building with 48 beds, and we have 62 kids. Where do they go? I don't know. We cannot control the judges. That's pretty obvious. They will do what they want to do, and they should do what they want to do. They're a separate branch. We, we are heading for some difficult times. If we lock ourselves in to a static building, you know, what goes next? Do we say to the county attorney, well, I guess we're gonna have to add another floor, so you're gonna have to move blah, blah, blah somewhere else? I suggested adding another floor when I was serving on this committee, and it was shot down immediately. Don't do that, because if you build it, it'll fill it. Okay, well, then, I understand that after Aaron Hanson spoke to that group, one of the leaders said, maybe we should add another floor. Well, it's kind of like, you know, you're not an expert unless you're at least 50 miles from home. You know, you don't have anything to really contribute unless you're 50 miles away from home. You're not, your opinion is not quite as valuable. Well, I live on 10th Street, so it really wasn't too valuable. But we need, I think we need to really seriously step back and do some serious planning. I think this thing will go, and I think it will have public support, and I think it does need to be put to vote of the people. I have moved that far, and I know that separates me a great deal from the committee, but I really regret that to the extent that I don't want to make enemies. But at the same time, I have to be truthful to my values and what I believe. That's, that's where I am. There's a lot of things that I, I'm not gonna be redundant, but I, there are a couple of things I want to mention now, if I could, Mr. Chair. Sorry to ramble so much, but they're important. The design of the building bothers me quite a bit. From what I've seen, it's a lot of glass. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't look like it belongs down here across from this traditional courthouse that we're next door to. It doesn't look good next to the O P P D building, I don't think. And I think, I think it kind of looks crummy next to, pardon me, next to the Flatiron. What I see, if you take a look at a building that looks like, it shouldn't have that much glass in a courthouse anyway. Judges are disliked sometimes, so are prosecutors, for that matter, and even defense attorneys. So, I don't think it's a good idea to do this. And I think from a heating and cooling point of view, it's a disaster. What I'd like you to do is take a look at Pacific Life in Exarban. And they'll be surprised I brought them up. But take a look at Pacific Life in Exarban. Now, there's a building that fits in downtown, that looks good, that looks like a courthouse. It does have windows, has light. And I think we ought to be looking at some kind of a design like that. I don't know who designed the building that we're being shown. I didn't have a thing to say about it, not any commissioners did. I don't know. But we, we need to go back to ground zero on some things, and that's one of them. So, and the site plan, I know we need to talk about that, the final design, final is interesting, because I don't even, I didn't participate in the draft. And we need to listen to people. I'd like to have Aaron Hanson come in, and somebody else I ran into that is a good friend of mine at that Wake for Tom, was Hal Dobbs. And Hal, his impression to me, and we do know that Hal has opinions, which I love. So, anyway, Hal and I visited about that, and Mary, and the same sort of concerns came from him. And this is a guy who took the idea and the concept of a new arena and got it done. I mean, people ask me about downtown development, and I say, you know who really did that? It was Hal Dobbs. He's the one who did this. Now, I know he's a Republican, but he did it. And he did a hell of a good job with it, when you look at it. I mean, he's raising these questions, and I think we ought to hear from people like him. So, those are my words. And I, you know, I, I'm kind of mixed up on, I'm very much in favor of that courthouse. I'm very concerned about the, the size of the building. I'm concerned about whether or not these three alphabetic organizations that are supposed to be helping youth are really functioning. Are they really? Are they really functioning? Will we be adding a fourth one? If we do, where do we put that? What about the mental health? Is that gonna be in this building? I believe it is. You know, we really, really need to nail this down so that we, because there's not gonna be any major, we cannot do major remodeling to that structurally, to have another floor and all the rest of it. I think we're heading for something we're gonna regret.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Thank you. You raised a couple of points that I, I think that we can shine some light on, Commissioner Boyle. The Finance Director prepared a proposed $120 million bond offering comparison for the last Administrative Services Committee hearing last week, which shows the differential in dollars, tax dollars, by using the Building Commission's AA bond rating, higher interest rate, rather than our own AAA bond rating, lower interest rate. And it comes out to just short of a couple million dollars over the life of the bond. That's just one increased cost that this vote today will represent to the taxpayers of Omaha. That's on top of what we're purchasing the M U D block on. That's on top of what we've purchased the O H A building for. That's on top of what the redesign of this facility, now that it's going from the west side of 18th Street to the east side of the 18th Street, will involve. None of which has been discussed for a moment in public by the private corporation that's proposing this. Private corporation is represented here today, not only by Mr. Carpenter or Mr. Ochoa, but by Commissioner Borgeson and Commissioner Morgan, who sit on their board. We have incurred millions of costs, millions of dollars of cost so far, and this is just the beginning of what's going to be a large, unnecessary property tax increase for every property taxpayer in Douglas County. We can mitigate a little bit of that, because one of the, I guess, good things about our discussion of this and our attempts to get people to take a second look at some of the alternatives, is that the eminent domain that was pursued, over my objection and others, of the Perrin building appears to be no longer necessary. And so, rather than expending more Douglas County resources and inflicting more costs on the private owners of that property that they wanted to take, we should stop the eminent domain. Obviously, with the acquisition of the M U D block, there's no need for it for this project to go forward. And so, we should stop the eminent domain proceedings immediately, at least eliminating some of the costs that are going forward unnecessarily on this project. And finally, I mean, the, the whole design thing that, that Commissioner Boyle, I think, has some rightful concerns on, are based on not the design of the building going forward, because we have not seen that. Hasn't been presented to us. It exists, presumably, it's been shown behind closed doors, like most of this project has been in its progression, behind closed doors. But none of us who are asked to vote on a large, unnecessary property tax increase today have seen it in public. None of you have seen it in public. And without that, they are asking us to approve a large, unnecessary property tax increase sight unseen. Vote no, vote against that. If you vote yes for this, you are voting for a large, unnecessary property tax increase. Instead of better, cheaper, and smarter, it'll be worse, wasteful, and wrong.
Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Borgeson.
I want to touch on a couple of points that Commissioner Kavanaugh mentioned. First of all, I have not seen any designs, except what I've seen at this public meetings. That's number one, so that, my record on that. Secondly, I attended your Administrative Services meeting last Monday, as you know, to be there and, and listen to the citizens, it appeared. I want to mention a couple of things. On this interest rate sheet that you have in front of you, which I saw last week at the meeting, Administrative Service Committee, and I commented there about it, and my comments were these. The interest rate decreased by going with the public bond is 60,000 a year, stated here. And Commissioner Kavanaugh can correct me, or, our Finance Director, but it says 60,000 over 30 years is $1,008,000. If you have a special election, and I talked to Brian Cruz about the special election, it would cost approximately $400,000. It may be more than that, but at least that amount. So, right there, with that increase, the first six, seven years, it's a payback. Secondly, we have heard, and we still hear it on Bloomberg, that's, I listen to that a lot when I'm driving, there still is an intent to have two increases in the interest rate in the next year for certain, even with what's going on in some of the other countries, China and Europe, as far as the slowdown of their economy. If you have those two increases, you can't have that special election next month. It'd probably be next year, or next, it'd probably be four to six months from now, at least, before you could put all that together. Those two increases could possibly bring that interest rate up, and I mentioned that at the Administrative Services Committee. The other thing I said to one of the citizens that was there that raised some of the questions, and I don't see the lady right now, and she talked about the vote. All seven of us, as Commissioner Boyle stated, know that we have to build for the courts, the county attorney, public defender, et cetera. And some of those costs have come back at nearly $100 million, when we had presentations Commissioner Kavanaugh presented and we presented. If the people, the citizens voted down, and I never count on anything for certain, if it were not to pass, then what do we do? Do we go out and lease space somewhere? Because that's what the alternative would be. And I asked that citizen that raised that point, that question. So, I think we have to be cautious about that, but those are just some of the facts. Go ahead.
Well, I'm glad to bring those up, because, you know, I listen to you carefully on matters like this, and I think that it's always instructive to hear you. Two things. We don't need a special election. We have a regularly scheduled election in May of 2020. This could be on the ballot for it, so it's not $400,000. It is, if you call a special election. We're not calling a special election. Secondly, as to the interest rate going up, the former Fed Director just came out and said that the prediction that, that they're going with is that interest rates will go down. So, former Fed Director Yellen says that the current rate is adequate for now, and that-
Wait, stop right there.
Well, we're talking to the question he raised.
I let you get in, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to not be hard, but I'd want to let you get in, let PJ reclaim, and then I'm gonna go to his next. Finish, please finish.
Lastly, I'd just say, I have it here on my notes. If we did not have a special election, and we went with 2020, when there would be the next city election, and I'm not sure that that would cover it, because it isn't countywide, but if we had it that way, keep in mind, that's a year plus some months away. And I think if you talk to any construction person, we're gonna continue to see construction costs increase, and whether that's 3%- costs increase, and whether that's 3% or whatever that percentage is, is a substantial amount. And I'll stop there.
Wait a minute. But wait a minute, you're not, wait, no, Jim, no, you're not.
I tried, when I, when I tried to enforce the rules, you want to, I'll give you a turn. Commissioner Borgeson.
Well, this, everything, I mean, this is just amazing to me, how many things are thrown out there, and Commissioner Duda said it right, that are just flat out wrong, not factual. This catchy phrases of better, cheaper, smarter, worse, wasteful, wrong. It's, it's just amazing to me. This board has been given, as well as the public, the space allocation, which another person on this board used to create his own plan after the board voted three different times to move forward with this plan, that a alternative $50 million project ended up being a $115 million project, which is only $5 million less than what our project is. And it is based on a gross max, maximum price, and so it will not go above $120 million, which again, another wrong fact is that the purchase of the M U D building is not factored into that $120 million, or let me just say, the $120 million project, it is included in that, Commissioner Kavanaugh. So, you know, again, we can create the controversy if we'd like, and that seems to be what some folks like to do, to be able to get the headlines and get in the news and create doubt. But in the end, this project is needed. This project is for not only the services in which we provide, which now, as Commissioner Duda pointed out, everybody agrees to the largest part of this project being agreed upon by all members of this board. So, whatever alternative there is, is still going to cost and will still end up in a tax increase in order for us to put in place those services in which we are mandated to provide space for in a building. More importantly, as we move forward with this, and Commissioner Boyle, your conversation with folks that you mentioned here, I've had conversations with them as well, and they're willing to come to the table and look at alternatives that they would be able to place these children, rather than having to take them to the youth center. And that's what this is all about. Our youth center is not the place that these children will end up. The youth center is a holding place until it is deemed, there is a, an appropriate placement for that child. So, our work is to try and figure out three things. How to keep them from coming in the facility to begin with, and that is, again, additional conversations with law enforcement and others in the community for community-based programs that we already have, or that we need, or that we need to build capacity to. If they do enter the youth center, let's take a look at who's there and what's holding them up from moving through the system, at whatever point it is, whatever point they're at, to moving them through faster so they exit the juvenile detention center into community-based or wraparound programs within their home. And thirdly, if they end up in the youth center, and they have to stay in the youth center, and then they're discharged from the youth center, once they're discharged, do we have in place services and programs for them and their family to be able to keep them out of the system again? And I don't know how anybody can be against that. And that's the emphasis right now as we move forward with developing the program, developing the design. What do we need in order to achieve those three goals? And we are well on our way. We've talked about the mental health. We're not waiting until this project is completed in order to do that. We are having conversations, as you saw, with UNMC Creighton, the federally funded health clinic, Charles Drew, to start looking at those mental health services, those med management services, those aftercare services, and start getting those in place so that we can show how that movement is going to affect and is correct in the number in which we have chosen to build the existing youth center. And I just want to make a point, I agree with the person, I don't think she's here anymore. The individual who, I don't think it was you, the one who said that she had visited the youth center and it is just, you know, great the way it is. Our youth center and its staff are remarkable folks. I just, not only philosophically, but just downright disagree with that that facility is the proper facility in order to house youth from today on. There are opportunities for us that if we are able to move the youth center in conjunction with co-locating it with the other services to which the youth and their families will need in terms of the courts, county attorney, public defender, and probation, we can then look at that property, what that, where that youth center sits, to create some mental health services, which every single one of these, our board members have talked about needing in this community, both for the children and the adults. And so, again, it, it just, it amazes me, really. And I've never, I've been on this board a long time, and I have never, ever been faced with such media frenzy from commissioners that that seems to be more important than the project itself, creating that. And so, I think we need to step back and take a look, we'll have designs, they all know it, every board member knows, that the designs that we had on the block west of the M U D is being looked at on how to retrofit it to the M U D site, those will be forthcoming. The space needs don't change, we already have that. In fact, the famous alternative plan used those numbers, used our budget numbers to create a false alternative plan that was not going to be better, cheaper, or smarter. So, let's deal with the facts. And again, we have shown that we're bringing those designs, we're bringing that information as we have it to this board and to the public. So, alls I ask is, stick to the facts as we move forward.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. Mr. Carpenter, would you come up for a minute? Using your CAD or computer assist, computer assisted design, how hard is it to change the look of a facade?
Well, I mean, we evaluate facades constantly as we go through a design process, so-
So, the facade we saw is not necessarily the facade we'll get?
I, I think we would be open to comment, obviously, as, as we go through. We, we wanted to really look at some massing, is what we were doing.
And with the new glasses, glass that they put in buildings, they're less expensive to build, is that correct?
There's been a lot of improvement in the technology of glazing and glazing systems, and, and so-
And, and they don't radiate heat in or out, like the old glass does?
There is a coefficient, a shading coefficient, that is pretty incredible, even in clear glass, to reduce the amount of radiant heat gain.
So, not being, not being an architect or a designer, you know, I might have disadvantaged, but I still try to keep current on what's happening. The glass, I, I'd prefer not to have glass, or ask much glass, and to counteract what somebody said, there is going to be natural light in the youth center, is there not?
Yes.
Okay. And that's been emphasized over and over again, so I don't know how people are not listening. Now, that, that's all I want. Yes.
Those were really relevant questions, and I appreciate being asked those things.
Anything else you want to contribute at the moment?
Well, no, I, I think Commissioner Borgeson addressed it, that there will be dialogue for the design as it moves forward. There has been enough valuation to, to know that it fits well on, on the M U D site, it's a site that we looked at about a year ago, so we know a lot about it, we know actually quite a bit about the M U D building itself, because we had an opportunity to look at that a year ago, and, and some renovation studies on that as well, so-
Okay, thank you.
If that's helpful.
Yes. And if I may, Commissioner Kavanaugh loves those soundbites, you have them saying, over and over and over. I, I didn't count, but I bet it was said 30 or 40 times this meeting. So, I'm going to create my own soundbite. Needed, cost neutral, and better. The design, has anybody on this board been shown the actual design?
We, we've done massing, again, I think there were even some images in the paper from-
From the previous?
Yeah.
But that can change here, can it not?
Right, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, these designs may not be significantly different than the other, but they may be different.
Right.
And they haven't been finalized because we haven't purchased the property yet.
Right.
You don't design till you own the property. So, there's a lot of misdirection and irrational thought. 10 years ago, when I was first on this board, the first national association and county meetings I went to in Washington, D.C., Mary Ann, Chris, and I, and I'm not sure if there were others, visited in Maryland, a youth detention center that was so much more modern and efficient than ours. And we visited one in Virginia that co-located a lot of the services, and it was so much better and friendlier and, and amiable than ours. So, one other thing in the plan that Commissioner Kavanaugh showed us, in the square footage they used for the juvenile detention center, I was reading in one of the many publications I read, so I can't tell you which one, that building a school costs $73 more per square foot than what they were building. $73 more per square foot for a school, that's not a correctional center, just a standard public education school. So, you know, the $115 million that Kavanaugh has proposed, it's not significantly different, and because there's no guarantee, could be significantly higher. So, I do not appreciate the design, the, the misdirection and irrational thought, and the repetition over and over and over of needed, cost neutral, and better. Needed, cost neutral, and better. I can say it 30 times too, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Boyle.
No, I'm, yeah.
Boyle.
Almost us, alright, save it. Bruce, your mind. You know, and, and the interesting thing about all these conversations is that we are so close on this issue that it's really remarkable. I mean, the things that, I like both your slogans, but anyway, not necessarily, you know, I'm kind of a slogan guy. Anyway, no, I mean, I, I think we are closer, you know, nobody disagrees about the need to take care of these children better as they did in Maryland, or the needs for changes. But there are concerns that we have. For example, one of the things, and I don't know that Commissioner Borgeson meant it when she said, some of the things about developing programs, that's what I'm worried about. I think, one of the taxpayers that came up here talked about having the programs in place that are functioning at, at top levels. And, you know, we, we saw, you know, Ms. Dennis was in here and raised a lot of issues about one of the programs, and that was, it raises, raises flags. Are these things really operating, or are they ready to go? And, you know, are they working? I don't know. Should we have Mike Dornicki take a look and see, audit them somehow? And I'm worried about, not, I'm worried, and I want to talk to World Herald, I told them the other day, called me, I said, I'm just worried that, you know, we're on this report from Sherwood, the letter demands, in a polite way, it says that no more than 48 beds. Now, aren't we, aren't we talking, aren't you talking about more than 48 beds?
Right now, we have programmed 48 beds plus the opportunity to, that shell space for an additional 16 beds.
Okay, well, I, I suggested that, and was totally told, no deal. When I was, went to those meetings, I was.
That was an additional.
I was told, I was told, no deal on additional beds. I said, I think we need another floor, I'm worried about the numbers. No, no, I can do it. And then Aaron Hansen came in and said that, and suddenly it flipped and said more space. I am glad that happened, but that's not what Sherwood is requiring. So, I, I, I'm concerned that I am worried that we are lurching ahead in a building that we really don't know if the programs are working, what they are, what if we want to add one? I mean, how do you add a program to a static building? I mean, you know, it, it doesn't work well. I mean, it doesn't work at all, as a matter of fact. The thing you have to do is you have to move somebody out or do something, but you've got a finite structure, and there we are. And, you know, Commissioner Duda has been on the building commission for a long time and made some very good suggestions about a courthouse a long time ago. And it's been, I mean, I, I think it's been in the mill for at least 10 years, but I have talked about. So, I mean, it's overdue. There really isn't that much agreement, it's just, can we be assured that this is ready to go? And I'm not sure that it is. And in defense of Mr. Kavanaugh, which, anyway, in defense of him. He has done this at his own expense and without any help from any, from any financing from the county. So, he has tried to put together an alternative, and I know the slogan is annoying, I, I told him that one of the words he used is probably not real good, but anyway, that's okay, that's Jim, and he's, he's a believer, and I admire him for having those opinions. But the deal is that I think we agree in these things, we just need to be sure that it's going to, going to happen. And part of the, part of the problem with this whole process was the open meetings law, oddly enough, because only three commissioners could attend a meeting. And so, we would have to come back and translate to the other commissioners, who were at a real disadvantage in listening to what we had to say. And when I finally reached a point where I was really not contributing to that group, I said, I told Mr. Gannon that I was leaving, and, and I suggested that maybe Mr. Duda would be a good person to put on, and, and, you know, and it all evolves. But I'm not up to speed on what's been happening lately, and it's, it's, it's the open meetings law, oddly enough, that causes that. We need, I, I really do, we really do need to have these programs in place before they're, before we commit to that size of a building. And the other thing that's kind of concerning is that part of the recommendations that we received in that letter is that we adopt an appropriate vision and mission statement for the juvenile justice system. I think we have one. I mean, I've seen it, and when I was chair of that committee, I remember it functioned pretty well. But then the other one that's kind of concerning, there's a couple of others, but, that there be a juvenile justice deputy supervisor, or similar person is hired to oversee all aspects of juvenile justice for which the county is responsible. It sounds like we're talking about replacing Mr. Alexander, which I don't like hearing. And then there's another one in there that talks about telling the public defender that he has to assign attorneys to juvenile justice only, and that's not going to happen. So, we need to, you know, because first of all, if you go to work for, for Mr. Riley and you're a public defender, I, I'm sure you don't want, I know you don't want to, as a young lawyer, and I'm not one, but a young lawyer does not want to be assigned to working on juvenile cases forever. His part of the appeal is that he gets to go into some of the more sexier cases and before judges and so forth. Some of this isn't workable, and I'm concerned about it, but I want to ask too, on that, on that design that I've seen in the paper, and there's one in there yesterday or whatever, of the building, is that, did we pay for that?
Well, there's been schematic design developed-
Okay.
... and meetings with all the departments to look at the adjacencies, and to make sure that they're getting the space that, that each one of the departments need. There's been a series of meetings, so in conjunction with that, the design was developed. I think the one that was in the paper yesterday was the previous, previous design.
Yeah. Well, see, I, I've never seen the insides of a schematic, all I see is that exterior, that big glass tower that I find very unattractive, it says 1973 to me. It says nineteen seventy-three to me, you know? And I, for one, want to be involved, I want to have something to say about how that building looks. I think it ought to be in the tradition of the M U D building that's, we're saving next door. That's, to me, is a much more attractive style across the street from the courthouse and from the adjoining buildings. I do want to say that when the vote comes, I intend to, I'm going to be voting on the prevailing side so that I believe parliamentary, parliamentary law allows me to bring up the subject once again, which everyone's so pleased to hear. But I am opposed to what's happening with the Juvenile Justice Center. I tried to separate it so that we could do the courthouse separately, and I could vote yes on that. But I'm probably, I think, right now, I'm thinking I'm going to vote yes on this project because I'm for the courthouse, but I'm not for the, what's happening with the Juvenile Justice Center until some questions are answered. And so, but I'm going to reserve the right to bring, bring the issue up again because I think we're going to have to. I think there's still a lot of questions. So, thanks.
Commissioner Borges. Commissioner Borges.
The, I'm trying to remember way back when, what I wanted to, the point I wanted to make.
I thought I was right.
No, that's definitely not one.
It's your level. Was it that we're beating a dead horse?
Yes, we are beating a dead horse.
We have dead horses.
Um, I can't remember. I'll try, if I think about it, uh, we'll be talking about this again.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
It's fine.
Okay. All right, let me just make some points, factual points here, and then I'll call the vote. But, you know, Commissioner Kavanaugh, you made a point of saying I didn't come to your meeting, but, you know, this year, I'm going to be above the fray and I'm going to shake the hate off. And I'll just refer to you as my good friend, like they do in the Senate, my good friend from District Two, who made the point that I missed the, the meeting. And, you know, like I said, I've been dealing with it for ten years, so I know that subject very well. And the point that Mr. Carpenter and I and some other people were meeting about was not the building, we were meeting about services. And that goes to the point that Commissioner Boyle made to some degree, is that, you know, you can build that building, the services are not about the building. The service is about what happens outside of there, and there's talk about services going right now, and the thing about the services are, you can't build a service that will last long, long lasting. You have to build it and evolve it around the kids and who you have in there. So, I think your concern about the building and the services should be, it should be a little less tense because those will, those will continue to evolve. I think the point that's made, you know, there was a point that was made to H D R and, you know, making money off the project, well, and it was kind of implied, like, you know, it was wrong in this suit, but the, I touted, you know, building renovation that's going on at the jail is actually managed by H D R. And there's no project that we do here in the county that's not managed by somebody outside. So, you know, this is consistent with what we do in that respect. Now, I met with Officer Hanson, and he's a great guy, but, you know, you can't have two sides of that argument when the paper touts that the police arrest and their approach to crime has reduced so many reductions, and then at the same time say you need to build more beds. There was a point made that, you know, we've expanded the youth center, the youth center was expanded, I think in the eighties or the nineties, and nothing has happened since then, it's been reduced. And all over the country, youth crime rates and crime rates are going down. Our, this argument that we're having, again, I just want to say, you know, factual wise, we had this argument when we were at a hundred and forty-four beds, and we went to one twenty. We went from one twenty to ninety-six, and this hovered around seventy-five or seventy-six, and that's not to the officer's point of needing more beds, it's because of needing alternatives. And if he wants, and if he's concerned about the placement, that conversation's happened with them. And there's a couple of things that'll come before the board in the future that are being set up right now with Child Savings Institute and placement, that they've signed off on and said, okay, that's what we need to some degree. I think the answer's been, been, been done about the beds, and it's forty-eight to sixty-eight beds. But I just want to respond with some things to a couple of people said, and there was one that, you know, they're saying we're going to build a high-rise, this is not going to be a high-rise, you know, and saying you want this place to be somewhere where people come to visit. If you keep a status quo, that's not going to be somewhere to visit. Everything that's being talked about now puts us in that realm. And if you're saying the best interest of the kids, science says the best interests of the kids are not served in a facility that's built for adult kids. That's science. Built way back then for adults. It's adult baby jail. That's what that is. This will be a detention facility built to rehabilitate, which is at the core of juvenile in Nebraska. So, it's been great debate. There's a motion to second on the floor. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Would you like to make a comment?
Please, if I might.
Here.
Yep.
That I did vote yes while I am opposed to what's happening with the Juvenile Justice Center. I think that it's, you know, you mentioned the hundred and forty-some beds we have now. Apparently, that was a mistake. Are we making one now? I think we might be. So, I mean, we're not all-knowing, although I've told Anna I am, but she doesn't believe me. Anyway, we're not all-knowing. I think it may be a mistake. So, I'm voting in the, voting positive so that I will have the right to bring this issue back up because I'm voting on the prevailing side, but my, my heart is with voting no on the Justice Center.
There's a point I forgot to read, and I just want to make sure I read, so this, this fact is known to the public. The county portion of the total property tax is thirteen percent. A ten percent increase of that thirteen percent of the total is one point three, and the tax is due to Douglas County tax owner. So, that was brought up, I just wanted to make that point for the record. With that, we'll go on to the Human Resource Committee, which item one is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service. Item two, and that is a submitted item two, is the Legislative Session, which, as the weeks come, that item will get more beef here. And with that, there's a need for Executive Session for.
Personnel litigation, labor negotiations, and real estate.
Personnel, litigation, negotiation, and real estate. Is there a motion to go in Executive Session?
Did you get, I'm sorry, Commissioner. But did you?
Excuse me.
Okay, very good.
What'd you say?
Personnel litigation, negotiation, and what?
Real estate.
I make a motion that we have Executive Session.
Say it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle, to go in Executive Session for personnel, litigation, negotiation, and real estate. Please vote.
I vote yes. My machine is not this far.
Okay.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
And again, we're going in the session for personnel, litigation, negotiation, and